Supervisors, we did not have a closed session today. If you wouldn't mind standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, every being and just one.
Did you even look over there? Sorry. First thing we need to do is allow Supervisor Crew to attend this meeting remotely. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Heather, call for the vote, please.
Thank you, Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell?
Aye.
And Supervisor Onato?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Public matter is not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the Board County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action referred to staff and/or committee for a report and recommendation for a possible subsequent board meeting, please note there's a three-minute limit. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Diana Haley. I'm with Amador County Public Health. I'm a program manager there. And Joanne is kindly passing We're just here to talk about a new public health app that we just launched at the end of last week. It is a preparedness app that is free to anybody in our community. It is anonymous. Nobody has to put in any personal information to use it. And once you download the app, which is PH app, you just go in there and put Amador County, and then you will be getting information specific to our county. The app monitors verified sources for health and safety information, and it sends enhanced alerts and actions and resources that our community can use. The members that choose to download it can choose what level of alerts they'd like to receive. Some examples that come through the app will be things that come from National Weather Service or CDC. It will give any alerts that affect our community and resources associated that they can click on. This app also allows Amador County Public Health to customize alerts that we can push out to our community, and so it'll allow us to monitor and provide information. The most important thing is that in preparedness, we want everybody to have situational awareness of things that could affect them. That way, that attempts to help them with their planning. The great thing about this app is that the person using it can pick more than 50 languages. So if we have people in our community that English is not their first language, they're then able to choose the language that works for them. And when they receive alerts, it will come directly in the language they need. Our goal really is just to help residents of Amador County receive verified public health and safety alerts and give them guidance and resources. So I just wanted to share that with everybody. And the app is available on iPhone, Android, and there's also a web-based version. So the flyers are out, and there'll be more information going out to the community over the next week or so. So we just wanted to share that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You know, just to comment on that a little bit, I mean, I appreciate you sharing it, but I would think local emergency stuff like that would come from the sheriff's office. Are you work with sheriff's office, or how is that dovetailing?
So the sheriff's office, stuff that comes from the sheriff's office is typically the things that you need to, like, do right now, evacuation, evacuation zones, things like that. What's going to come through this app is more situational awareness and preparedness stuff to prepare if there's an event that needs to happen. And if the sheriff's office gives us information, we certainly can push it out to the community as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Carlos Stotin. I'm from, I've escaped from Calaveras County, actually. Had been there for many years. My family owned for generations property over there. And, you know, over the years, I've done things like I had a, you know, reported into Department of Justice. I've had to do all kinds of stuff, including at one time I had to have a supervisor put on a 72-hour hold and took, turned it into a week-long, and they adjusted supervisor's medication and got back out there again. I take a keen interest in local government. After University of San Francisco, I went to London School of Economics. And part of what I did was I would travel to other countries, Eastern Bloc countries, and observe and take notes and write papers on their small governments, the second cities, the smaller municipalities, and how things work there. So for years, I've been, you know, looking at government, even when I've been in the private sector, just watching, making sure everything goes right. And I got to say, you have one of the best county governments in the state of California. I got to commend your Chuck Ray, your County Administrative Officer, on his hiring of people, whether they come from neighboring counties, or whether they're homegrown, or whether they come from outside the area. He has done a fantastic job. I got to commend you on keeping him aboard and keeping him going. I'd like to thank you for this time. Mr. Crew, I've known most of my life, and I can't wait to see him get back in here.
You too. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind everybody that we are having our Budget Workshop on May 8th. We were planning on starting it at 8:30 in the morning and going late into the evening. Well, at least the afternoon, so.
And just a note, Mr. Eylee, any of the public out there, it's open to public if they want to come and weigh in. We're happy to have their feedback.
And we are planning on Zooming it, too, so they can watch or ask questions.
Actually, quite honestly, I wish more of the public did come.
Anything else from the board? Okay. Approval of the agenda.
Still moved.
Okay.
Second.
We are, we need to pull item 1B. Sorry.
I'll make that part of my motion. Is that for later date?
Yes, it'll be brought back later.
Yes, Senator Gill apologizes she had a conflict and had to reschedule.
Okay. That I am pulled. Call for the vote.
Thank you, Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell?
Aye.
And Supervisor Onato?
Aye.
Okay, passes 5-0. Approval of the items on the consent agenda? Anybody for the public wants to speak on this? Okay, Zoom? Okay, call for a motion again?
Still moved.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell?
Aye.
Supervisor Onato?
Aye.
Okay, passes. We're on to regular agenda. For supervisors, discussion of possible action relative to the adoption and presentation of a resolution honoring Mark Bonini upon his retirement from the county of Amador. Do we have anybody who's actually presenting? Well, Mark, I'm going to read the resolution right quick. How's that to you? Okay. Whereas Mark Bonini was born on April 17th, 1970, in San Pablo, California, and whereas Mark grew up in Pinole, California, graduated from Pinole Valley High School, and graduated from California State University Fresno in 1995, earning a Bachelor of Science degree in criminology. And whereas Mark is a son of Joseph and Doris Bonini, and twin brothers Stefan and Stefan Bonini, retired lieutenant, El Cerrito Police Department. And whereas Mark married the love of his life, Cynthia Bonini, on June 20th, 1996, and credits her for her being the biggest supporter throughout his career. And whereas Mark and Cynthia are the proud parents of Brett and Sam Bonini, both whom graduated from Argonaut High School and went on to achieve bachelor degrees and pursuing careers in public service. Whereas Mark started his career in Amador County Probation Department in 1996 as a department probation officer assigned to juvenile placements. Mark served in almost every role within the department and eventually being appointed the chief probation officer in 2007. Mark served as president of chief probation officer of California in 2016, that same year earning a chief probation officer of the year and honoring, awarded, bestowed upon him by fellow chiefs for his work at the state level, for achievement, for probation professionalism. And whereas Mark loves his spending time boating and traveling with his wife, golfing with his boys and brother, serving community as a proud member of Jackson Lions Club, to which he serves, served as president from 2000, I mean, excuse me, from 2022 to 2023, and enjoying both college and professional sports. Whereas Mark has rendered over 29 years of faithful and dedicated service to the county of Amador, Mark is a proud of his accomplishments and takes pride in all his family work ethic, committed to helping others and professionalism relationships he has built throughout the years. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the county of Amador, that said board does hereby adopt this resolution commending Mark Bonini for the many years of service to the people of Amador County. I, uh, I'm going to start this out a little, a little weird. And the one thing about being in Amador County, there's definitely six degrees of Kevin Bacon in this county. And unfortunately, Mark's father had passed away quite a few years ago. But his father got me into being in charge of a little water association up on the hill where he had lived. And he, his father had served 10 years as, on this board. And I've also served a few years myself. But their, their family has always been of service to the county, and I truly appreciate that.
Thank you. I do want to acknowledge the board and tell you all thank you for, you know, bestowing this honor upon me and allowing me to speak here this morning. Thank you to the CEO as well. But I did, I did write a couple of things down just so I wouldn't forget, you know how that goes. But first and foremost, I want to thank my wife Cindy, who's in the back, for giving me the latitude she has for the last 17 years to do what I need to do as the chief probation officer of Amador County. Without her, I simply could not have done it. Along with thanking her, I also thank my two boys, Brett and Sam, for their support. Second, I want to thank the probation department staff. With a special thank you to Debbie Segali, who recently retired herself. She was my second-in-command for all my term as chief. And without her and our staff, who most are here today, I wouldn't have been able to achieve the things I did during my term as chief. It's truly been an honor representing them. Third, I want to thank my mentors, Chiefs Gary Davis, Mike Bagnell, Mike Krilicich, and Mark Giannini, for all they did for me over the years. Fourth, I want to thank Judges Hermanson and Day, who are both here today, retired Judge Richmond and especially retired Judge Harland, for appointing me Amador County's sixth chief probation officer at the time. Next, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors and all the supervisors who I've had the opportunity to work for over the years. It's truly been an honor. I'd also like to thank Amador County Administrative Officer Chuck Eylee, as well as past CAOs I've worked with over the years. Last, I'd like to thank current Amador County Sheriff Gary Redman, retired Amador County Sheriff Martin Ryan, Amador County District Attorney Todd Reby, and all the chiefs of police from my own Jackson and Sutter Creek Police Departments, as well as the various Highway Patrol commanders. And it seems like there's been a lot of those commanders that have come through over the years that have served here in Amador County, and I've had the pleasure to work with all that time solving local problems, ensuring public safety. Those leaders in their departments and offices are what professional law enforcement is all about. We're very lucky here in Amador County. Just to give you a little bit of a history, the Amador County Probation Department has come a long way since I started in 1996. It's, I tell my staff this, but it's kind of a little bit of a joke, but it's the truth. At that time, my office was a closed porch attached to one of those little yellow houses behind the old courthouse. I thought to myself, man, what did I get myself into? But it really was an attached porch. The probation department had to use the fax machine at the district attorney's office at the time. We didn't even have a fax machine in our department. We had two radios for field officers that they had to share while working, doing home supervision and home contacts. All our vehicles were hand-me-downs from the sheriff's office. I know recently we talked about vehicles and we're going through the budget process, but those vehicles that we had, what we would receive traditionally would have 100, 150,000 miles on them, and the deputies tend to not, not take too good a care of those. They're a little hard on the vehicles. We had no centralized, computerized case management system. We had no way to share officer safety information with our allied agencies where it was readily available. We were lucky to have safety equipment essential to help ensure probation officers had what they needed to perform their duties as sworn peace officers. Like I said, we've come a long way since then. So I know the board and the county's going into budget hearings, but just know that those dollars are well spent to ensure public safety. I'm looking forward to retirement, but also looking forward to what newly-appointed chief probation officer Darren Brodel and the probation department staff will do under his leadership. I wish you all all the best and God bless.
Thank you, sir. You deserve. Would anybody else like to speak?
Good morning, Supervisors.
Good morning.
My name is Caitlin Casey, and I'm a Deputy District Attorney at the Amador DA's office, and District Attorney Todd Reby wanted to be here to recognize Chief Bonini, uh, but has a meeting in Sacramento that could not be rescheduled, so he's asked me to share his sentiments about the chief. I've known Chief Bonini shortly after I first came to Amador County, he wasn't a chief then, and I wasn't the district attorney, Mark was a deputy probation officer, and I was the chief defense attorney for John Barker and Associates, the firm that held the public defender contract for Amador County, I handled all the juvenile cases, Mark was frequently the probation officer assigned to juvenile court for youth who had been removed from their families, together we had an understanding that it was imperative that we reach the troubled youth that came to us before they became adults and the consequences for their misconduct were far greater, we did a lot of good for Amador's youth back then, and we helped many teens turn the corner during a difficult time in their lives, I was elected District Attorney in nineteen ninety-eight, and Mark worked his way up the ladder, becoming the Chief Probation Officer in two thousand seven, Mark continued working to assist Amador County's youth, focusing on treating them locally, rather than removing them for out-of-county placement, in two thousand sixteen, Mark was elected by his peers to serve as the President of the Chief Probation Officers of California during the time I was elected to serve as President of the California District Attorneys Association, retired Sheriff Martin Ryan, County Assessor Jim Rooney, and retired Supervisor Richard Forster were also leading their respective state associations during the same time period. Mark has been a steady hand at the probation department for eighteen years, we didn't always agree on things, but I always knew we could work out any problems that developed, he is an excellent leader, a true gentleman, and I am proud to call him my friend, thank you, Mark, for your friendship, your service, and your dedication to the law enforcement community and the citizens of Amador, I'll see you around. That's from Todd Reby. Thank you, Supervisors.
My boss is going to be on the board of supervisors?
Anybody else?
Chairman Crew, did you have any comments?
Yes, I do, Mark, um, sorry I'm not there today, but, uh, we're losing a real pro, work on that golf game.
Judge Day?
Thank you, I'd like to thank my predecessor, Susan Harland, for appointing Chief Bonini as well, uh, he's been an incredible leader and partner to the court, uh, always looking ahead to the legislation that's coming down the pike, uh, meeting with the judicial officers about how we're going to handle things, um, always proactive, always knowledgeable, and uh, can't thank him enough for the leadership that he's shown.
Thank you, Judge. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
I have a comment, um, one thing I've always kind of noticed doing my job is you have a good department head or leader, um, normally the office is pretty quiet, and Mr. Bonini's probation office has always been pretty quiet, there's not a lot of hollering and yelling, I don't see much feedback coming back, so it's, that's always a good sign, um, I'd also like to thank him for letting me know about how many miles they, they'd run their cars, so it's, we have budget hearings coming up, so I appreciate that, but I think, um, Mr. Bonini's done a very good job, and I, I thank you for your years of service to, to the people of Amador County.
Thank you. Thank you.
Supervisor Epperson?
Been a good four months.
Second.
I wish you all the luck there.
Okay, call for a motion to accept the, uh, resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I heard from the left first. Okay, call for the vote?
Thank you, Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Okay, this passes five zero. Judge Day and Judge Hermanson, would you come up here since you're really their boss, his boss, or was his boss?
You know, I just realized when I. I just, I just realized when I turned around, there were all those people back there, I completely forgot about them. But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wait a little bit while the room clears. I love how law enforcement always supports each other, awesome to see. Okay, we're going to continue on with Amador County Tourism Marketing District, public meeting to take, um, public testimony regarding the proposed ACTMD. So who's presenting?
Just kick it off, so, um, just, it's in my staff report, but at the, at its last meeting, the board, um, did adopt the resolution of intent to establish the Amador County Tourism Marketing District, uh, which initiates the formal process by which the board can eventually establish the district, uh, the resolution was supported by petitions from lodging businesses that would pay just short of about seventy-five percent of the, uh, proposed assessment, uh, the process, the procedures governed by Government Code Section four, five, four, nine, five, four point six, requires at least, uh, one public meeting at which officials shall allow public testimony, which is today, and in addition, a public hearing, uh, which is scheduled for May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and at that meeting, the board could formally create the, the district if it chooses to. The notices went out to all the lodging businesses that we had contact information for, um, that had paid TOT in the previous year, um, and, so, we're here to take more, more public testimony.
Okay. Here you go.
So, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Nice to see all of you, uh, so, uh, we did a short and sweet, um, kind of bullet points, because I know we've been seeing each other a lot lately, so, um, but, we just wanted to kind of go over again of what makes, um, the Tourism Marketing District so important and kind of give some highlights. You know, we've gone over this a little bit, but all of the amazing annual events that we have, um, the arts community is so amazing throughout Amador County, another thing that makes us so unique is just our outdoors and how we have, um, you know, outdoor activities year-round, the hospitality, you can go into, um, most businesses, wineries, restaurants, and actually meet the owner, meet the wine maker, which is not usually the case, so, uh, like to highlight all of that, our amazing historical assets from the Kennedy Mine, to the Knight Foundry, to the Preston Castle, and so many more, um, and then we have on there great burgers, so one of the campaigns that we did was, um, the Amador Burger Trail, or Burger Root, um, and so there really is, every single restaurant has a amazing signature burger, from the Moo Burger, from Mel's, to the Taste Burger, and everything in between, so just showing, highlighting what Amador has to offer and, uh, all of our guests that come to see us.
Tracy? So, so why have a, a Tourism Marketing District, well, um, it provides stable funding for tourism marketing, um, and I know when there are budget cuts, uh, everybody says the marketing team doesn't matter and, um, let the marketing go, but actually, that's when you need to market more, when things are down, and, um, and when, when you can make an impact, um, so that's when you need to start marketing, um, not, not, uh, when you think you need to cut, that's when you can create more revenue, um, to come into the county, to draw more people, so it's important, um, that, that we, uh, ramp up our, uh, our efforts, um, a Tourism Marketing District is funded by those who create the district, um, it's all by businesses and, and petitions have been signed by businesses that would then support this, um, again, uh, this is a self-imposed, um, nationally, after a Tourism Marketing District has been passed, the marketing budget, which means the TOT, has been increased anywhere from twenty-one percent to sixty-eight percent, so think about that in terms of the county TOT increasing, um, within those numbers, and that's a national number.
Now, what you're saying, those, that's not what it says there, that's, what you're saying, the TOT that comes back is increased amount, not, not the tourism budget?
The Tourism Marketing District, uh, budget is based on that, that assessment, so the assessment itself is going to increase the TOT as well. So when the, when, when you're passing on the assessment, the assessment, then that money goes directly into marketing, that, that marketing then increases business, thus increasing the TOT, thus increasing.
Okay.
The budget for the TMD. And, and all of this is a five-year trial, if it really is horrible and it doesn't work, we can say, hey, it didn't work, and, um, and, and I'll, I'll be okay with that, but I believe that it will be great and, uh, we'll be able to make some incredible headway, um, within the five years of the, of the, um, program. So, we can, we can create the future of our community, um, we have the decision-making, so the stakeholders, the people that are participating in the TMD, can make decisions on how the money is spent, um, and we, we have, uh, we want everyone to come to the table, um, and be, and be part of this, things that are important to people who are traveling now are the outdoors, we've got that, it's the arts, um, it's agriculture, uh, they, people want to be in touch with where their food comes from, where their beverages come from, they want to be outdoors, they want to do that, we have that here, I, I always call the El Dorado National Forest my playground in my backyard, and, um, when the top of Shake Ridge was closed, I kept, I kept talking to Richard Forster and saying, we have to open up my road to my playground, it takes too long to go around the other way.
Part of your playground got burnt.
Yes, yes, it did.
Tragic.
It is pretty tragic, but still beautiful, um, so, so, you know, people want to get connected with the history, um, and, and we have so much incredible history here, and, uh, and we just need to share it, and, and those kids that are coming through and, and learning, um, so many kids are homeschooled these days, uh, bringing in those homeschooled kids to learn about California history and bring it here where it actually happened, and Amador's small enough to make this an exclusive experience, um, we can customize things for people to come and experience and, and create specialized itineraries for them, so we have the ability to create the future for stronger businesses, um, for varied tourism, and, um, for celebrating what Amador is. So, all lodging venues will benefit, um, not everybody chooses to stay in a hotel, maybe a majority of the, of the, of the TMD funding is going to come from the larger properties in Amador County, but not everybody, when they come to stay, is going to stay in those larger properties, there are people that will, but there are people that choose to stay in different types of lodging, so we can't tell people where they have to stay, but we can tell them that they can come and stay in many varied types of lodging that are available in Amador County, so with that aspect, everyone can benefit from that, it's not just the larger properties that will benefit, um, everybody, it's, it's gonna, it's, there are people that have told me, I will never stay in your hotel, I only stay in Airbnbs, I like to stay in Airbnbs, and that's great, because they're contributing and they're coming to our community, um, and they're, they're shopping, and they're patronizing our businesses, and that's what we want them to do, and that's really important, um, to understand that we want everyone to benefit from this. So, uh, TMDs have, um, proven to be huge economic drivers for communities after they've been established, um, and just to give you an example here, uh, you see, um, other regions, Sacramento has, uh, developed the Aftershock and Golden Sky Music Festivals, um, and down in the Central Coast, Shebang Music Festival, and Bottle Rock in Napa, those were all developed by the Tourism Marketing District funds and the people on their committees to bring, uh, people to the communities and have overnight stays that generate more TOT. Some of the, uh, TMDs have, uh, done trolleys in the summer to, uh, get people around, get them out of their cars, and get them into public transportation and complimentary Ubers, uh, to make sure people go out and, um, support the local restaurants and music venues, uh, but get home safely, um, so there are different ideas and ways that, uh, other Tourism Marketing Districts have used their funds to create more revenue, um, into the, into the community in which they serve, so these are just ideas.
I think something important to note is when you look at that, we're not, I think some people might look at that and be like, oh my gosh, I don't want Aftershock coming to Amador County, that's not a recommendation, what it's showing is that when you have a stable source of funds, you can really focus on how you market and have something that's successful, and that's controlled, and that's targeted, and so what our funding will allow us to do is to be able to forecast out and pick and choose different events that are happening around us, that are having those large amazing events, and we can offer smaller groups to come in during the week and, um, do different things while they're making, because a lot of people, you know, come and they're doing like a, a four-day or, um, even a week-long event, and going, you know, to El Dorado, and then coming into Amador, and then going into Sacramento, and so, um, you know, I think that one of the things that, as I sit and listen and hear, there's a lot of, um, throughout the positivity, there's a lot of apprehension, um, to what tourism, the, the trigger word of tourism, and so I think that something that needs to be, um, thought of and considered is that we live here, we work here, we love Amador County. we work here, we love Amador County. This is a voluntary district again. We have not had an executive director. We all have a day job. And we're doing this because we're passionate and we care. And we see in our own businesses how we're struggling. And so we want to thoughtfully be able to market strategic groups with a budget that we can count on to bring them in mid-week when businesses are struggling and they can't staff and they can't stay open. We don't want to see another empty storefront in Sutter Creek and Jackson and I own in Amador City. We want to, you know, I, I hear a lot of people, oh, Amador, people would just discover us and we were fine. I remember, you know, coming up here, visiting my grandparents, you know, I'm older, so 30 years ago, and there would be like huge buses of, you know, people from Germany coming in and people from, you know, China coming in and they would, you know, frequent all the stores and then they leave again. So we've always had tourism, we've always had, but, you know, you need to have thoughtful. No matter what, change is inevitable, growth is happening. If we can be on the forefront of that and control that and still maintain what makes Amador, Amador, you know, I, that's what makes sense and that's what our passion is and what we're trying to do today.
I wanted to add just a few details from conversations that I've had with some different lodging partners over the process of this, because that's been a big part of what I've been involved in is, is really trying to talk to as many lodging partners as possible. Until the notices went out last week, we didn't have contact in for, direct contact information for a lot of the short-term rentals. So I've been getting some calls and emails and that's been really great. One of the gentlemen that I talked to, his family has a short-term, they've got some cottages on their property, they have a winery. He said, he was really excited to learn more about this and he said he gets calls from El Dorado County. And they send him people who are interested in filming for movies on his property. And like, that's an exciting opportunity for both the county to get that visibility, but also for him to be able to have people lodged on his property. And these are the kinds of things that we can do if we have a coordinated cohesive effort. We just don't have the resources currently to be engaged in that outreach. Kim, who runs the Roaring Camp Gold Mine, I have talked to her a few times. They do a lot of trade shows, outreach, specific to bringing in visitors to their property. She has expressed that it would be great to have a more coordinated effort to help support those. We need resources to do that. It's something we want to do and it's going to support the efforts, the individual efforts that a lot of these properties are doing. It's not, it's not going to replace what individual properties are doing, but it's going to support what the individual properties are doing. So I think there's definitely a lot of great feedback from a lot of different properties. Because the size and type and location is so varied in this county, we're getting a lot of really great feedback of what people need. And the goal is going to be to get the resources to help support all of those efforts.
So how, how are we going to measure our success? There's a lot of measurements of success and any type of marketing that we, we, we engage in and any, any salesperson we talk to for marketing, we always ask them, how is the ROI measured? And these are different measurements that, that a lot of other tourism marketing districts use to measure their success. So increased lodging occupancy and RevPAR, social media interaction, ad impressions or clicks, website views, overall economic health of the community and press coverage, mid-week visitation and active participation on a board. It's like a dream come true.
So your next slide is the Dean Runyon Report. So the, the newer report will be coming out in another couple of weeks. So, but this one's showing up to 2023. So you can see this is specific to Amador. So you can kind of see the course over from 2013 and then obviously the drop with COVID and then we're picking back up again. So, you know, it's important to note, though, that there's a lot of our neighbors that are already back up or well above. So we're always kind of a little bit in the lag behind. So something to note. So as the, as the slide says, you know, the doors will open to success for all of the community. So yes, this is a pass-through that lodging is, you know, putting through, but it helps everyone throughout the community. Marketing districts have been proven to be economic drivers as we've kind of reiterated over and over again to where not only does it give us a budget that we can count on and have our own sustainability, but it also helps the county and the rest of the businesses by raising the TOTs, by increasing visitation and awareness. So, you know, as we've been saying over these last few months together, we just really want to strengthen our community through smart and thoughtful tourism and marketing. And again, you know, really solidify a positive future for Amador and for the, the folks that have businesses within it and are, you know, children that want to open a business or do something and be able to have that sustainability and actually be able to keep their doors open. Another key point before we open it to public comment to, again, realize this is a pass-through assessment. So this is something that the customer would pay. It is not a tax, it is a pass-through assessment and that assessment is, that 2% is what goes to the marketing budget. And so I know there was some questions about, how did we reach the, the number that we have, which is the projected about 200,000? And that's based off of the TOT numbers from not only county, but the cities. So it's not only non-incorporated, but incorporated. And so the attorneys at Civitas and all the powers that be that know all the number crunching came up with that number. The, the 300,000 number was including, which we'll see you again shortly about, which is the funding request. And so that's where that number was generated. Because I know there was some questions about that and there had been some concern that it was much lower. That is a, that is an accurate number based off of everything that we have right now and the numbers that were submitted. And then, you know, again, we love Amador County. We all work full-time day jobs and a lot of us are on other boards. And this has definitely been a labor of love for the past seven years. We've been working hard to come back and push this through. And so we really appreciate everyone's time and thank you to everybody at the county seats to help us get to where we are today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions that we can answer?
Yeah, I have a question for you. I was looking at some numbers. I don't know if they're correct. You probably have a better idea than I would. It looks like Sutter Creek gets a little, little over $300,000 from TOT. Plymouth, 368,000. I think Sutter Creek gave like, what, 3,000 or 5,000 to ACT?
Actually, it's, it's, it's quite a bit more. So Sutter Creek does, they have a lodging assessment that they put through to us. So it's like, I believe the last check was 9,900 and something. So the 3,000 that you've seen before, when the Sutter Creek used to have their marketing committee, I believe it was, they would, you know, put forth, because we would do a lot of cooperative. But the funds that we receive are from the lodging.
If you're referring to the P and L.
Yeah.
There is a mistake on that because that, that, not all that money is accounted for in the ACT P and L. It's in the Lodging Alliance account.
Currently, there's a separation.
There's two separate accounts.
So any of the money that the county is giving us, like what we'll see you again shortly for, stays in the ACT account. And then we have our Lodging Alliance account that is strictly monies that are given to us from, that are lodging assessed.
Yes, like 5,000 from, was actually Jackson. Sutter Creek was like 3193. That's going into basically ACT. And then you have the Lodging Alliance, which is a separate entity.
Correct.
What's the budget on the Lodging Alliance roughly?
It's about, I'm going to say 20,000 a year. Yeah.
So that's not very much if, look at the TOT numbers that...
So the Lodging Alliance is a voluntary tourism assessment. And, and there are, there's the Sutter Creek funds and then the, those that are not in Sutter Creek, there's about three or four of us that, that contribute to that.
So it's not, because it's not a mandated marketing district, there's only a few people that put into it. So that's why it's so important that it's a cohesive organization where everybody is contributing to make it worthwhile to be able to have that.
The point I'm making, I think this, for what the cities get from TOT, they're not giving you very much. Unless it's, maybe Chamber gets a little bit or something. I don't have a Chamber numbers, but I would think they'd give you more. I mean, the county gives you a pretty good chunk out of our TOT. Being quite honest, I think it's probably going to be reduced a little bit if I have my way. I don't like doing it, but we've got a big hole in our budget, we got roads that are going to hell. I'm kind of surprised you're not getting more whether, whether it's a Lodging Alliance or ACT from the cities. They should.
This is part of why we're here on this subject because we need a, the, the challenge has been, not just for Amador, this is why this is such a common practice across the state, is it has been a problem for jurisdictions everywhere to get consistent funding when they rely on either the cities or the county.
Because they're scrambling too.
Yeah, they're scrambling too. And so that, the assessment, the 2% assessment that is passed on to the visitors allows us to raise sustainable funding so that we can market, which then will increase both our funding, but also the TOTs for the county and the city sales tax. So that's really kind of the real benefit of this is it, it lessens the scramble and allows us...
Listen to me, I call it the money scramble.
Yeah, so, I mean, it, it's, yeah, it's more about allowing us to take the raising of these funds into our own hands instead of the cities determining every single year, well, this year we can give you 5,000, this year we can give you 10,000, or this year I'm going to collect an assessment on my guests, but this hotel down the street isn't. And that's why we, I know we've talked a little bit about, can't this be voluntary? If it was voluntary, we, we've seen how many actually.
And that's where I struggle a little bit. I mean, a question for you ladies. Would you have heartburn if we exempted like a single VRBO house or under so many, so many rooms are just not even on the table?
I, I think that, you know, from a, from a lodging owner's standpoint, I have to, I have to have all these inspections. I have to have my, I just had a fire inspection and I have to make sure all my fire extinguishers are up to date. And I, I have employees, I pay all the, all the insurances and all the taxes on having employees. When you have a business that doesn't have any regulations on it, yet they don't have to be part of what you're doing. I, I think there needs to be a level playing field and everybody needs to play by the same rules.
That's an interesting aspect, but also we're, we're also seeing that they have to come into something they don't want to be part of maybe.
And...
If they want to pay voluntarily, they could.
And, you know, not everybody always wants to be part of everything and that's understandable. But I think the way that the districts are written and how they are is that if we have the majority of the people that are collecting the TOT and support of it, then it's just like, you know, I may, I may have voted to pass the, the roads tax in November, but a majority of people didn't. I'm disappointed that it didn't go through. But, but more of my, more of my fellow Amador County residents chose not to. It's the, the converse thing. If, if a majority of us are choosing to, to impose the, the assessment on our guests, but a few are not...
It's also going by a weighted average, which, which changes the vote as far as, it's not one person, one vote, it's...
Correct, to pass it. And then after it's passed, then everybody has the same.
So if one person had 99% of the rooms, you could have 99 people vote against it and one person say, I want it.
Correct.
No, there's actually, and Greg can probably speak to this there. I think it's if one property has more than 50% of the rooms. There, there is an exclusion that makes it so that you have to have...
Correct me, but you know what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, but the...
So one person could have half the votes? Or one, one entity?
No.
I'd have to look it up, but it's, I mean, if one business has a particularly high percentage, then their percentage doesn't count.
What would be, what's that?
I'll look it up for you in a sec.
And in the, while he's looking that up, Brian, you know, the last time we came before everyone, we had a lot of small properties, but we needed the big properties to be able to make this happen. So, so this time we came in top-loaded with the bigger properties to support us and to support this initiative. And, and so we didn't go and get all of the smaller ones off the bat, one, because there's so many that we didn't even have contact for. But, but we came in with the idea that we had to meet the percentage threshold and we far exceeded that percentage threshold.
Yeah, I think last time is what Luke was, told, it's changed their mind or something or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's 40, it's 40%. If someone is over 40%, their, their percentage would not count, but there wasn't anyone near, near that high.
Well, thank you.
We have a lot of really small hotel, what are considered hotel properties in this county. You know, 10 rooms, 11 rooms, 16 rooms. It's not, we have a few larger properties, but we have a lot of support from, you know, some of those smaller properties. And we're increasingly talking, now that we have contact information, we've continued to collect support and trying to get them to send in petitions or commentary to the boards. So hopefully this week or in our next meeting, we'll hear that from some of the short-term rental owners who really do think this is a good idea.
I've got a letter from like three people against it and not really many recent ones.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're still working on that outreach and, you know, so hopefully in the next, between today and next month, we'll, we'll get more of those. I think the other point, though, about the, the size is the way that these laws are written is it's about the benefit. And if the marketing is going to bring in more visitors who are going to utilize the services of those lodging establishments, then they're benefiting from the district. And so like Tracy mentioned earlier, there are visitors that want to stay in a variety of sizes and types and locations of properties. So the benefit will extend to all of those properties. And I don't know, you know, legally if we can exclude, you know, this size versus this size and have that, you know, still, you know, comply.
Yeah, to that point too, I think with some of the research that Supervisor Cornell has looked at too, it sounds like some properties have already opted out anyway. I mean, they're just not paying.
Yeah.
I mean, de facto, I mean, there's a lot of people that aren't paying. So, I mean, I think they want to opt out, they kind of do just because they're not paying that. And do you think about, do you think half of the STRs are in support of it? Have you gauged that at all?
I don't know that we have.
I'm just out of curiosity.
We don't even have a complete list of the STRs.
Right, that's, that's to my point, yeah, to my point, actually. Thank you. Okay, we'll see if we can get some comments from the public now. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. There are so many things wrong with this proposal, but I want to focus on one thing. And that is residential short-term rentals should be excluded from the proposal. They call it a tourism marketing district, but it is first a business improvement district. call it a tourism marketing district, but it is first a business improvement district. According to the California State Bar's Continuing Education Program, a business improvement district is a revitalization tool for commercial neighborhoods such as shopping malls and regional business districts. Short-term rentals are not a commercial use of property. They are a residential use. Proponents use Government Code Section 253, 25132 subsection E2 to define a short-term rental. It is a residential dwelling. The very next subsection, E3 states, residential dwelling does not include a commercially operated hotel motel or bed and breakfast. A short-term rental is no more commercial than a long-term rental. In the published case Protect Our Neighborhood v. City of Palm Springs, 2022, petitioners alleged that short-term rentals violated the zoning code because they are commercial, not residential uses and improperly changed the character of the R1 zone. The court rejected petitioners' claim the vacation rentals constituted commercial uses that were barred in R1 residential zones. The court noted that R1 zones expressly permit any use that is customarily incident to the use of a permanent single-family dwelling. The proposal before the board asks you to assess solely residential uses to subsidize solely commercial uses. That error is remedied by Streets and Highways Code 36632, which exempts solely residential zoning from any assess, any assessment, whether property-based or business-based. And if there's still a question, a county council can ask the Attorney General's Office for an opinion on that, but it's, seems to be clear to me and a lot of cities and counties throughout the state. This proposal is also inconsistent with Amador County General Plan policy. Land Use Policy L U 1.1 is protect existing land uses and public facilities from encroachment by incompatible uses. My land use designation is agricultural transition with residential estate zoning. All five zoning districts compatible with commercial land use are incompatible with my land use designation and zoning, see Table L U 3. Including residential short-term rentals in the plan would have constitutional implications. We have a fundamental right to exclude others from our private property. My private road cannot be taken and made public without compensation. We have a right to privacy. If an organization advertised my home to the public as a lodging place without my permission, it would violate those rights. Such violations could hardly be viewed as specific benefits or specific government services worthy of assessment. Proponent's plan states the marketing and sales programs will be designed to increase room night sales at each assessed business. I do not give permission to proponents to advertise my home for any reason. The vast majority of room sales in Amador County are from multi-room hotels within city's limits. Staff arbitrarily omitted room sales from 49er Village, even though they signed a petition in favor. A tourism marketing district should be limited to city-based businesses, actual commercial districts. When 10% of all lodgings in the county can pay almost 100% of the assessments, the district should be limited to those lodgings. Short-term rental owners could never receive due process to oppose this plan because it is impossible for their, their sales to reach the majority opposition level. Therefore, we must rely on the board to act on our behalf. Streets and Highways Code Section 36624 gives the board the option of revising the district's boundaries during the public hearing. It can exclude territory that will not benefit from the proposed improvements, maintenance and activities. That would be solely residential zoning conclusively presumed not to benefit. If the board decides to establish a district, we are asking the board to exclude from the territory all short-term rentals that are residential dwellings. Thank you.
Question for you. Um, do you advertise through V R B O, Airbnb?
Both those.
So you go, you know, you're kind of an argument against yourself because you are dealing with a commercial outfit to advertise your facility.
But they, they screen the guests and that's who we chose to advertise our home.
But you're still going through a, a commercial outfit, a commercial business to advertise your residential thing, which you're voting against them to do.
Oh, yeah. Thank God.
Excuse us. We've got extra sound in here.
No, I'm saying that the, the business improvement district is for commercial districts, not for residential.
But you're still using a commercial outfit to advertise your residential-
Well, V R B O and Airbnb are commercial businesses.
Right.
But I'm not.
I understand that, but you're still using them to advertise.
Right. But that's our choice.
I understand.
To, to, to screen people who come to our home because-
You would still screen anybody that would use your facility.
I don't need anyone else.
Okay.
We have all the bookings we need. We want. We don't want people there all the time. It's mostly weekends. And really, we're both in our late seventies. We make less than 10,000 a year on the rental. We don't want any more people there any more than that. And for these hotel owners, Hilton Hotel, 100 rooms have to come after us for 2% of our income. That shows there's something seriously wrong with the way they're running their business.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the supervisor?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments from council?
Come on.
I just want to, I've, I've, I've exchanged a lot of emails with Ms. Sweet. Um, I've looked at most of the issues that she brought up. Some I think are new. Um, I just, I don't agree with, with them. Um, the, uh, the, her main argument is that the residential property, all residential properties are exempt. So the code does provide an exemption for residential properties, but this proposed assessment is not assessing property. So under this act, you assess properties or you assess businesses. This is a proposed business assessment. Her business is being assessed. I don't think it matters where her business is. The business is being, uh, properties are presumed to be exempt. So if it was a property-based assessment, a residential property would be exempt.
Yeah. Thank you.
And, and I did exempt, um, I did not count the room revenue for 49er Village because there was no way to split out the RV percent versus the room percent. But since they did submit a petition, it would only increase the percentage, um, from, from the 74 point something percent that they had. It would have made it higher.
Okay. Think of that clarification. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Amanda. I'm the Division Manager of Amador Rail Explorers. We have made a local impact by employing 20 people in the county and supporting businesses. In 2024, we had 36,000 riders on the railroad tracks that came to Amador County. And in return, many of them would go to other businesses throughout the county to shop. We have a red rider wristband program that we partner with local businesses to encourage our guests to eat shop locally. With this being said, none of it would be possible without the support we have received through Visit Amador. We have partnered with them the last year and a half, doing different events outside of the county, like the Bay Area Travel Show and Seasonal Spectacular in Sacramento. One question we all hear is where is Amador County? It is important to get the word out, what our county has to offer, and this is what they are about. We have found that our partnership with them has brought a broader outreach of networking and a lasting impact on our company. Amador County Tourism Marketing District is a networking tool for our county that reaches out to more than just Amador County, and it is important to continue their funding for the future economic of our great county. I can say on behalf of Rail Explorers, we have partnered with these ladies. Um, like they said, it's not, they're not being paid to go and do what they do, but they do a phenomenal job. Um, we were at the Bay Area Travel Show in March and they don't just go out and do for their own personal businesses. It's for every personal business in Amador County that they're advertising for. And they do a lot of footwork. And like I said, um, we really wouldn't be where we, where we are in our, um, company if it wasn't for their support. Um, I would say that Amador Rail Explorers is a very unique, um, attraction that's came to Amador County. Um, but with that being said and being able to utilize that, uh, we can't use that if people don't know where we're at. And like I said, when we were at all those places, um, the number one question we had is where is Amador County? And that's what the, this, um, these ladies do. That's what they do as an impact for us and they get the word out there with marketing.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Jennifer Pritchard and I am one of the owners of Amador Brewing Company. Uh, we have a production facility in Plymouth and taproom in Plymouth and as well as a second taproom in Pine Grove, recently just celebrated 10 years. Um, I'm here today to voice my strong support for the Tourism Marketing District proposal. The truth is, businesses like ours rely not just on local customers, but a steady stream of visitors from outside of the county to survive. Tourism keeps our doors open, allows us to employ local residents and gives us the ability to reinvest into our community. Without it, I honestly believe that half the small businesses in our area wouldn't make it. The marketing district is a crucial tool to keep that momentum going. If we want our local economy to thrive, we have to stay visible. We have to keep attracting new visitors. This plan gives us a focused and effective way to do that. The funds stay here in Amador County and directly support marketing that benefits all of us. What that includes restaurants, tasting rooms, shops, lodging, and yes, our brewery. So I urge you to support the marketing district proposal. This isn't just about tourism. It's about keeping Amador County a vibrant, welcoming place where small businesses can not only survive, but thrive for visitors and locals alike. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir. I am Austin Ford. I guess I have to write this, right?
Yes, please.
First of all, um, you know, hats off to a group of people who are looking for a strategy to develop revenue for their businesses, you know? Well done. Um, the problem is, I have, there are several levels. I, I have some concerns. The, the first would be that money is being taken out of my pocket to support a segment or a class of business that I'm not part of, right? That bothers me a little bit. I think what we saw here, that was a remarkable presentation. But you know, I walked in a little bit late and I didn't hear one word about hotels, you know? It was all about promoting Amador as a county to visit, you know, as a center of tourism. All right. So I'm a, a little bit confused about what our real motivation here, think about the real focus of it, about their real intentions. And I don't believe for a second there's any other purpose for developing this concept than increasing the revenue of those personal businesses, right? Nothing wrong with that. I don't want you to use my money to do that. Okay? That's my fundamental problem with it. Second problem is that, you know, I travel all over the state with my little business, working primarily with wineries and vineyards, right? Amador's dying, right? Amador was hoped by people like Trincherro and Constellation, Turley, people like that, to be a new leader, uh, in the industry. Unfortunately, it's failed and those people are leaving, right? Why is it failing? Because what they were resting on their laurels, Zen, White Zen, Old Zen like that, was unique to Amador, right? And we thought that was wonderful and this will go on forever. It's over, right? Lowdi and other very large, uh, grain-producing areas are usurping all of that, right? Our little Airbnb business, which we started because the guest cottage that we, for our little kids, you know, who are now grown up, and, uh, one of them says, why don't you do an Airbnb? And we did. And it's, it's gone pretty well. The most important thing is taught my wife about capitalism. Okay? I really liked that. And the notion of, you know, expenses and, you know, budgets and things like that. Um, it's just been wonderful to see her do that and her communications with, uh, guests and so on. It's absolutely incredible. I had no idea she had that kind of skill. It was just wonderful. Interestingly, are we in the same tide? Does the commercial hotel tide raise our boats, you know? I don't think so. Does our increasing tide support their, their boat? No, I don't think so. Witness in, uh, 2000, 20, the COVID year, our busiest year, okay? Why? Because people want to get out of the city. They wanted to come to a remote area, have a little cabin in the woods and all that. And they could talk. They could walk outdoors. You could even go to stores, you know, things like that, go to church, you know? And that was very successful. I would, I would submit that that is the essence of the, um, offering of the private residences, right? That you can go somewhere where you, there was no commercial pressure on you. There's no one knocking on. I, I stay hotels a lot. I spent a lot of my life traveling and staying hotels. I like hotels because they're full service, right? Everything's there. Your room is clean. Breakfast downstairs, all that kind of stuff, right? Now, um, I recognize that as important, particularly for the business travelers, but for those that want to get away to the country, you know, that's, that's a different story. Okay? My third point is all about destinations. Um, why does someone come here, right? We do not have resort hotels that you can come away to, you know, and swim and all that kind of stuff, right? We do not have, um, access to a lot of local things you don't get at home, other than nature, of, of course. All right. What attracts people is a destination that they want to be part of, right? If you want to hear an example, I think, what will bring people to Amador County, listen to the rancheria ads. They're absolutely brilliant. They reach out to you and talk about this spectacular place where you can come and you can do something that's unique. Something I couldn't do in my hometown in, in Belmont or Boston, where we come from originally. You go out in the country and throw your money away, you know? And it's all about that experience. The thunder and the lightning and the energy in it is just tremendous. It gets my attention. I don't like gambling. I don't want anything to do with it, but boy, that ad gets my attention. I'm saying there must be somebody there. It's underscored at the very end by saying in beautiful Amador County. Beautiful Amador County is secondary to the attraction, okay, to the destination. I think I used the example, oh, and all of the, um, examples that were shown up here, really nothing to do with Amador County. They were all about destinations and, and locales outside of Amador County. I think we should consider that. Okay? What, what would be on that board as attracting people to Amador County, right? Would love to see that, right? And I think I used the example of our steam power and sawmill at the fairgrounds, um, which by the way, was one of the attractions that, uh, led us to live here, you know, people that wanted to preserve the history of it and can maintain the spirit of it, right? And I think I mentioned the time that, uh, Huel Hauser came through. Remember Huel Hauser? Golly gee, folks. And he came through to the Amador County Fair and said, there's something special here, right? Now, the fair hadn't been marketed as something special, but he saw the, the steam and the sawmill and all of that. And he, he just, he had said something about it as a happy place. I understand you get something that is unique. He came over there and he looked at it. He said, oh my God, will you look at this? You know, it went on and on and on. The next year, we had people from San Diego. We had people from Santa Clara. We had people from the Monterey area, all coming to Amador County, to the Amador County Fair to see this particular destination, right? That's how you grow an area, right? I don't think, um, what's an example I was thinking about? I think if you have, uh, the, an ad, uh, performed by the chain tire companies, right? America's Tire, right? And they say, come to America's Tire in Amador. And by the way, we're going to use Jackson Tire's money to, to promote our business, right? That's not right. No, you can't do that. And that's not a, that's not a destination either. But I would submit to you that, uh, that part of the industry that we've been, I've been part of 13 years now, is in serious trouble globally, right? But it's a big chunk of a small pond, okay, that we live in. And it's about focusing on rekindling that destination. We were going to run a Concorde Delegance a few years ago, uh, as part of our Rotary Organization. Fairgrounds would be a really cool place to do that. And then we started looking, well, what do people come for? They come to- They come to brag, and it's all about ego with their cars and all that kind of thing. But they want their family to have a comfortable time as well. We decided that number one, Plymouth was not an attractive place to visit. I would not bring my car there. All the derelict buildings and the old buildings doing nothing on Main Street and all that kind of thing, right? And we decided that there was, the lodging was tremendously inferior. I'm not even sure, no, rest was definitely not there, right? So we passed, decided not to do that, right? But it was an example of a destination. Real good, real good evidence of that would be in Murphy's in Ironstone. That place is out in the middle of nowhere, you know, built on lava, really, really hard rock. Just why it's called Ironstone, right? They bring thousands of people in for their Concorde Deligance. They have structured the site, you know, for that. And so they promote the destination, and people come, right? I would say another example of a destination is Taste Restaurant, right? People come here from outside Amador County to go to that restaurant, right? If I were these guys, I would promoting, I'd be promoting that. It's unique, it's different, it's high quality, you know, it's very, it's a high-class place, right? But that's an example of how I would go about this. But I think the way this was presented this morning is all about touting Amador County. I didn't hear anything about this one commercial class, okay, of businesses. But I have to surmise the reason that happened, the reason that people are here, right, is to increase the revenue of their establishments, not mine. So I don't, I think the idea is great. The implementation, the execution of it, I don't know. That's, I kind of question that, right? And I really like Supervisor Renato's approach to this, the dollars and cents, right? Dig into that, look into that, let the important thing, the long-lasting stuff surface, you know, and examine that, and you might get a little bit different picture, so. That's all to me, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Collins from Hotel Sutter. And my owner Karen Sage had a problem getting on Zoom. Anyway, the Zoom monster got her, so she apologizes, but she sent me a text. She's owned the hotel for about 10 years, and this is from Karen. This joint community marketing effort is so important. It's really a very simple concept that works amazingly well in so many communities across the country. Essentially, we are asking our guests to contribute a tiny percentage of the cost of their stay to the wellbeing of all of us. So instead of us trying to find a few extra dollars in the county budget to market the wonderful experiences of Amador County, we are letting people who come here and enjoy Amador to help us spread the word. A few years ago, I was in Lodi, and I saw a big celebration for them being named Best Wine Region in the United States by Wine Spectator, is that a magazine? Okay. The national gurus of the wine industry. When I asked someone, how in the world did you get that designation from Wine Spectator? She smiled and said, marketing. When we all pooled all of our money, we had the resources to go after that designation. That year, Lodi had $769,000 to spend to let people know about Lodi. I think Amador County had about $150,000. None of the money that Lodi spent to get that award came from the taxpayers in Lodi, not a penny. All of the $150,000 we, we spent in Amador that year came from our taxpayers. It really is time to change this. We are not asking an exorbitant amount from our guests, but that revenue will enhance every business in the county. Hotel Sutter has been collecting this money for several years. We have never had one single person complain. They love Amador, and when they finally discover Amador County, they love it. This is truly one of the best financial decisions we can make this year. It will bear fruit year after year and contribute to the financial health of our entire county. I hope we can come to a resolution today to move forward. Thank you so much, from Karen.
Thank you.
I also wanted to note that we do employ 53 local, we have 53 local employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Guess I'll sign in first. Sorry to take your time. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for your service to the county. My name is Susan Feist. I am on the Sutter Creek City Council. I also own Feist Wines and the Drytown Social Club. I've been in small business for the last 20 years in Amador and El Dorado County, so I've seen the challenges that our region has. We're really a weekend-focused economy, and it's also very seasonal, as I would imagine that you've seen in our sales tax revenue reports. First, I wanted to address the city contributions to the Tourism Council from being in Sutter Creek. We would love to give them more. We're relying very heavily on this group to market Sutter Creek, but we have to also fund the visitor center. We do our own events, we do a lot of beautification, and that all comes out of our marketing budget. And as you guys probably know, our budget also is very tight. We have a lot on our plate with regard to our sewer and the roads. I also wanted to remind everyone that this isn't going to be charged to the owners of the properties. Again, this is an assessment. And I think when we all travel, we see at the bottom of our receipt that there are always assessments and taxes, and that's something that isn't going to make anyone not choose this county to travel to. Anyways, with regard to why I'm here, I'm strongly in support of the TMD. I'm also overwhelmed, as you guys might be in government, of all the acronyms. But Amador Tourism Council is truly a vibrant organization, and I'm thankful to be a part of it. I wanted to bring in a couple of things from the Visit California Regional Strategic Tourism Plan. This is a two-year study that was a collaboration of quite a lot of groups. Let's see. And it was funded by the U.S. Economic Development Administration's Travel Tourism and Outdoor Recreation Program with federal funds. So I think ads from the state and the feds, we all know that this is an important thing to do. So starting with that, I wanted to give you just a short synopsis of the, they did every region in the state, and this is what I found interesting with regard to the Gold Country. They called us an emerging performer, saying that we should leverage our established tourism infrastructure while implementing sustainable development practices to manage growth effectively. And I think this TMD is doing exactly that, making our economy more sustainable. I wanted to spend a moment on the specifics of this. I don't want to take up too much time. I know you guys are very busy. And also, when we're looking at this, not only are we competing with other regions in the state, we're then, as this is all of the Gold Country, we're also competing with El Dorado and Calveras and all the other destinations. Can we mute Zoom, please? Thank you. So this is, the statistics are from 2023. The Gold Country region saw, thank you, saw significant growth in its travel industry. And I think these statistics are really important to the county and to everywhere, including the small businesses. We saw total travel spending to the Gold Country reaching $5.95 billion. Visitor spending accounted for $4.94 billion. Well, additional travel-related expenditures added a billion. So this is where I'd like to just spend a moment talking about, yes, this will benefit the hotels, the marketing, but it will benefit everyone, including the cities and counties. I know that my business, we get, I get a great mix of locals and tourists, but I'm, we just, there aren't enough of us to rely entirely on the locals. Let's see here. And they are encouraging with marketing for the Gold Country to continue to appeal to travelers as a destination. Couple more statistics. The economic contributions of travel in the Gold Country were substantial. Employment within the travel industry surged at 6.2%, providing 54,270 jobs. And I know in Sutter Creek, we're really looking at economic development and how to get people to be able to live here and thrive. Direct travel-generated earnings were $2.38 billion with key sectors such as accommodations and food services, arts, entertainment, and recreation. So this is again a reminder that it doesn't just benefit the hotels, it benefits all of us here. And then with regard to tax revenue, this is a huge one because I would, I don't, I haven't looked specifically at your guys' budget, but I know in Sutter Creek, the sales tax is essential in funding the city. Travel spending in 2023 generated $205 million in local taxes. That's a huge number. And we can then use it to fund infrastructure. And, you know, everywhere across the state, the roads are in need of repair. Reminder that tourism and community are symbiotic. I think anyone with a lodging would be pleasantly surprised in an uptick in occupancy across the board, not just for one person or the other, even the cafes, the shops, everyone. And then to address specifically the wine industry. I'm sure you guys have heard about the downturn in the wine industry in Amador, but this is not specific to Amador. It's international, it's national, sales are down in Napa Valley. So this would be something that we could buttress this group now. And we're so lucky to have this board and this group of women that has tirelessly worked to figure out how to market this county. They're innovative, they're inspirational, incredibly organized, and hardworking. Back to the wineries. We need to support the wineries. We really need to support the vineyards. I mean, I think I've heard rates of up to 40% to 60% of the grapes were not picked in this county. It's devastating for farmers. It's devastating for our rural landscape. And we need to protect this agriculture, and then that's going to go into the land use. One of the things that is so marketable and why we all love to live here, it's beautiful, it's rural, there's open space. We need, it is my opinion, we should try and keep this county in ag. This tax, or, excuse me, not a tax. This assessment will enhance regional marketing and messaging. And with regard to the short-term rentals, that's a totally separate conversation that I think the city and the county were all having. It's a challenge. We need to also house our residents, so, but I don't, this, I don't believe that applies to this. So in conclusion, I just ask you to please support us in this. We really need the money, and it will benefit everyone. And the tax revenue alone is amazing. So yeah, thank you for your time.
Assessment revenue.
Anybody else before I go on? Oh, one more.
Hi there. I'll sign in after. I'm Nicole Shabel. For those of you that didn't hear me speak last time, I was a long-term Amador County resident. My family owned business up country. My maiden name is Jackson. No relation to anything that was established here except a small concrete business up country. Anyhow, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that were talked about in our last visit, as well as a couple of the comments that were made. Of course, I'm going to start out by saying that no money is being taken from these local businesses, the Airbnbs, the VRBOs that own them. It's coming from the visitors themselves. I travel a lot for Travel Ball. I have two kids and two different teams, so I'm constantly moving. And the amount that I'm constantly assessed is, I'm used, I mean, I don't want to say used to it at this point. I just, it's such a nominal amount that I don't question it in any way. And because we're traveling to these places that are spending the money to better the fields and the roads and things like that, that allows my kids to go and play in these sports that they love so much and keep them from doing things that they shouldn't be, I have no problem paying that. I did just also want to say that, to Brian's point, to the small Airbnbs or VRBOs not wanting to come in on to something that they might not agree with. I think that that's continuing to allow them without regulation. And then this addresses the issue that Logan brought up at the last meeting with people with cash offers coming in and buying properties and using them as short-term rentals. This is what that promotes. So then it creates, where we create these limitations or these exceptions for certain businesses that are still, it is still a business within your house. As you were saying, Mr. Brown, you know, if they're using VRBO or Airbnb to promote their businesses, that's definitely a corporation that's promoting it. Visit Amador has never promoted any business that didn't ask to be advertised or sponsored or participate in it. I get requests constantly from VRBOs and Airbnbs that are asking how they can participate in Visit Amador more to drive that additional traffic to their residential businesses. I'm not giving out addresses, phone numbers, email addresses. We're promoting them as they request with direction directly to their VRBO sites or the information that they provide. So just again, to go back to what Brian and Logan have both brought up, you know, if you look at North Lake Tahoe, you know, that was a huge issue that they came into, right? Was, it was, it was people, it was residents that were complaining that they didn't want to have all these people coming in, and those that had one or two-room Airbnbs, they wanted to be excluded from the restrictions and the taxes and all the things, until it got to a level that it was explosive, right? So Lake Tahoe has how many VRBOs and Airbnbs now? And it was continuing to grow and expand at an exponential rate until the cities came and put a stop to it. And so now there's such limited restrictions that a lot of people, if they're choosing to buy properties there, the limitations on that are exceptional. And I think that those are the things that we need to be focusing on as opposed to limiting those that want to participate. I appreciate the fact that you have a one-room Airbnb or a two-room VRBO, but it is still a business and being promoted as such. I think that those small Airbnbs are missing the point of that you will not have people wanting to stay in this Airbnb or this VRBO if we don't continue to bring thoughtful tourism to the region. So again, this is where North Lake Tahoe does an amazing job of partnering together with Caltrans and the County of Placer, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. I was in North Lake Tahoe last weekend, and they have these flyers all over all the businesses saying, come to an interactive community event, discover and discuss. Join for this free open-house-style event to learn more and provide feedback on impactful projects and programs in the region, including critical infrastructure projects, Kings Beach parking management, summer road construction, emergency preparedness, house solutions, supporting small businesses. So instead of fighting each other, they're all coming together to find ways to help not just the residents, but again, to create thoughtful tourism. So I'd also, my last note, just to respond to one of the comments that was made in regards to history here. I personally help promote the region through Visit Amador. I am the one paid person, but I actually charge them less than any client that I have because I'm from this region. I live in a neighboring county now. I live in Cameron Park and raised my kids there. We rely heavily on those from the historical regions and societies, including Amador Arts, who all, who come to all of our meetings. They greatly appreciate the support that we've given them. I can't tell you how many Knight Foundry pamphlets I handed out at Bay Area Travel Show because that was the majority of the requests that I was getting, is history, hiking, biking, fishing. Those are the things that they want to know about in Amador County if they're coming from the Bay Area, because those are the things that they don't have. We work with Knight Foundry, Preston, Kennedy Mine, Amador Arts, again, all of those partners that attend every single meeting and have continued to pat us on the back. And any information that they provide us, we continue to promote not only through the region, but outside the region. So that won't stop, but obviously, the funding would be greatly helpful. I will tell you that I'm the one who brings any advertising opportunities to this region. And an average ad, just to give you an idea, outside of the ledger, is $3,000 for a regional magazine, so something like Style Magazine, that's for a single page. If you go to the Bay Area, you look at San Francisco Chronicle, you're running close- If you go to the Bay Area, you look at San Francisco Chronicle, you're running close to 6,000. And that's anywhere from a half to a full page. If you go into billboards, that kind of a thing, you're looking at 40 grand plus. So you know, everybody's seeing the crunch and I understand that, but any support that we can get, again, to try to make this a grassroots effort to bring thoughtful tourism here, I think is beneficial. And again, I would look to North Lake Tahoe and how they're handling it to kind of see what we could follow. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we got a Zoom.
Thank you. Caller, go ahead when you're ready and please state your name for the record.
Yeah, hi. My name is Apul Patel and I have multiple properties at, in Jackson, Sutter Creek, and Martel. And I have franchise Holiday Inn Express in Jackson and Ascend Hotel Kiota Inn in Sutter Creek. Though we have the corporate advertisement and they advertise for us, they don't specifically advertise local region. And that's why I support this particular TMD. And also, I think so there's a misconception that I heard from the people that is an additional cost to business. It is not an additional cost to the business as everybody said that it's pass-through, meaning we collect from the guests who are visiting and we give it to the TMD. And that money is, will be used to just not for the my hotel, but for the region. And that's why we are, I'm strongly supporting that because it's not just for my business that is advertised or just focused on my business. It is going to be used for the local other attraction like Kennedy Mine, Knight Foundry, wineries, and other ski resorts and other that we have. And that benefits my business indirectly, but at the same time, by advertising all of the local attraction, people get to see a different things which they cannot get it in urban area. And when this particular TMD is used for advertising and marketing, it is not burdened on local tax or local residents. It is going to be from the visitors and then we are going to attract more people and that's what I like about. And by doing this TMD helps not only this attraction, but the local restaurants, bars, wineries also. So if we do that individually, I don't think so. I can spend that kind of money, 3,000 to 6,000 for just my business and people will come. But as a group effort, if we do that, I think so it will benefit everyone. And that way, everybody travels, everybody pays taxes. I've been to New Orleans, they have four different type of, for the jazz festival or otherwise jazz group, their TMD plus the city tax. So they have on top of it, this TOT, they have other taxes also. And I'm just giving you as an example for the New Orleans, but though they have a lot of attraction, people know about that they are popular for Mardi Gras and jazz, but people still have that TMD and they want to attract more people to come. So in order for us to showcase our local attraction, we need to have this and I strongly support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person on Zoom.
Ms. Oberly, go ahead when ready, please.
Hello, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. My name is Sandra Oberly and on behalf of the California Hotel and Lodging Association, I'm speaking in support of the formation of the Amador County Tourism Marketing District. Tourism marketing districts are voluntarily established and represent a stable funding source for hospitality and tourism promotion. Due to the structure, purpose, and leadership of TMDs, there are over 100 communities in California that have benefited from the enhanced hospitality promotion in line with community needs and capacity. For these reasons, the California Hotel and Lodging Association strongly supports the next steps towards an ultimate formation of the Amador County Tourism Marketing District. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson, please go ahead when ready.
Thank you. My name is Sandy Anderson. I own a very, very small B&amp;B in Sutter Creek. The last few speakers have kind of done this, but I really want to emphasize to all of you, people that have spoken today, this money does not come from your business. This money comes from your guests. I've had my B&amp;B for 25 years and I think in all that time, we have had maybe three requests to explain what the tax is for. The visitors do not hesitate paying the tax. In fact, I think we could pay a higher tax, I think we could charge a higher tax, and I think all of you could charge a higher TOT tax. So it is not a concern of the visitors. And I don't think there's anybody who would say, "We just don't want tourism. Let's just not do tourism." I think everybody realizes what a terrible impact that would have. So if we're going to do tourism, why don't we do it in the right way? We're not going to say we don't want tourism. So let's do it the right way. Let's do it so that we can have what Tracy and Kathleen call thoughtful marketing. And one last thing, the gentleman that spoke originally, not originally, the gentleman that spoke about all of the marketing ideas that he has, please come to one of our board meetings. And please come and see if you can be on the board of the lodging, the lodging board. You have some great ideas. As you all know, marketing is very much a matter of everybody getting together and giving their ideas and a lot of good things come out of that. So again, my last, my last comment is, this money does not come from your business, it comes from your visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Back to the board. Supervisor Neto.
Can I send my piece so far? Just I'm taking the public comment.
Okay.
And my only comments would be just how the outreach to the help businesses actually implement the fee. And I'm sure that's all being thought out, but just from other conversations, I think it's important that it's a pretty seamless way for the property owners to be able to pass that through and that way the collection will be, you know, efficient.
Supervisor Cornell. Okay. So what's our next step?
So this is.
The hearing.
Oh, Supervisor Crew, sorry.
Not today. So the public hearing will be on May 27th. Today is just informational.
Right.
And we will have the public hearing at the beginning of the meeting again. Correct? We're at nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
Was it nine o'clock or 10:30?
It's, we scheduled it for nine o'clock.
Okay. Okay, well this completes the 1C, Amador County Tourism Marketing District. Thank you. Do you, does anybody need a break?
I'm okay.
You okay? Okay, well we'll continue on. Okay, 1D, Area 12 Agency on Aging, presentation by Deputy Director Doreen Schmidt regarding A-12, I can't even remember, A-12, Area 12 Agency on Aging and the services provided to the residents of Amador County. Hello.
How you doing? I'm Doreen Schmidt. Hello, Vice Chair Jeff Brown, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Dan Epperson's our new representative on our board and Chairman Crew. It's so good to be able to be here today.
I'm feeling left out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Onneto? Yes, I've done, I think Richard Forrester was here for all those years, you and he were always on the board.
It's fine, I'm just kidding you.
I don't know you yet, but that's all right. We're here just today to give a little overview of our agency and we're going to give a broad overview and then narrow it down in a funnel to the end where we would show the deliverables for your county. Next slide. We represent five counties, Alpine, Amador, Calaveras, Mariposa, Toowalamie. And this was determined by the California Department of Aging. Next slide. Our, our programs are 98% federal and 2% local and county match from the participating counties. And they come from the Older Americans Act and it was first established in 1965 as the federal government saw that there were no supportive services to keep older individuals in their homes and they were very concerned about that. We are the pass-through entity for the federal and state funds that comes through our agency. We have, services include transportation, information and assistance, health, family caregiver support, and nutrition programs. Next slide. We take our commitment very seriously and we want to build on community-based, we want to be very cognizant that we build on the strength of the community to offer services to deliver the highest quality for older adults. Next slide. Our profile is, we were established in 1987 and we're, we already said this, kind of we're a pass-through entity, but we do provide those funds through an impartial request-for-proposal process and that took place in, we're in the third year of our request-for-proposal. Next year, we'll be going out for our other four-year request-for-proposal for the services for the different counties. Next slide. Their key functions are administrative, leadership, and advocacy. Our leadership, we use community-based organizations and we use those here in Amador County, Amador County senior citizens. The Motherlode Office of Catholic Charities provides elder abuse prevention and ombudsman services. Our ADRC partner, DRAIL, Disability Resources Agency for Independent Living. The advocacy is the Advisory Council. We have approximately 20 members and we'll be talking about that a little bit in another slide. Next slide. So the planning process, every four years, we are required to do a needs assessment that occurred last in 2023. And our data analysis is found on our website. Area plan is 2024 to 2028 and that gives the whole picture, it's the blueprint of everything that we do, what we've done, what we are doing currently, and what we're planning to do. So we have to submit that every single year, an update every single year to California Department of Aging. Our provider contracts, this is the request-for-proposal every four years. The current contract cycle is 2022 to 2026 and Amador County senior citizens or Amador County Senior, Senior Center has those contracts for those services there. Next slide. Here's the senior population for age 60-plus. This was from the California Department of Finance for 2025. Amador County has 14,992. That was just a little bit down from last year, it was 15,863. Although we are, all of our counties experience a little bit of a decrease, we know that that, it's a huge percentage. Amador County is above 35% if you consider the whole total population. That's a huge amount of people that are in your county that are actually over the age 60. Next slide. The Older Americans Act requires each agency on aging to ensure this adequate proportion, adequate portion of funding. Ours are, in these three priority areas, access 65% in-home services, 7.5% and legal assistance, 2%. Next slide. Our joint powers agreement was established in 1987. This is our governing board and we have a supervisor from each participating county and Supervisor Dan Epperson is your representative on our board. Next slide. The Advisory Council is made up of local Amador County residents and you have about two, you have three or four, but we can always use more on our, on our board. And they give a lot of leadership in their eyes and ears out in the community and give us a lot of, oh, just a lot of feedback, which we need because we want to be able to meet the needs of that participating county. And we're tasked with having this advisory council, so it's not an option for us. We just had our advisory council meeting yesterday. So they meet once every two months and it's really kind of a fun thing to do. So if you have anybody that you want to give us a recommendation, we'd love to have that. Next slide. Our programs, our direct programs, our chore, homemaker, personal care, these are the in-home services and you can see what they, what they actually are there. And we contract with licensed providers and local. We appreciate the organizations that send referrals to the agencies, Health and Human Services, the Senior Center, APS, the DEA's office, we get lots of referrals from the different agencies over here in Amador County. Next slide. We also have a residential repair program. It's a minor home repair program mostly, seems like we do a lot of plumbing things, we do, you know, small step repairs, we do grab bars in the homes and that's a very, very excellent program. Disaster preparedness, we collaborate with each OES and when available, Commission on Aging. Next slide. Legal services interface, legal services, they provide free legal assistance to age 60-plus in all those counties and they can do things over the phone and, or you can, they can drive over the central offices in Toowalamie County, but they can do a lot over the phone and through faxes and they keep everything very confidential. Nutrition education is provided directly by us with a nutrient of the month to congregate diners and to home-delivered, home-delivered clients. Next slide. Family caregiver support. There's a lot of informal caregivers out there that are taking care of their parents and/or older relatives and we include, we, we're very adamant that we love, that we want to take care of these caregivers. Amador has 30 on our program and they receive respite services, the majority see in-home respite services that give the caregiver a break from their duties there in the home. Next slide. We also have a older relative raising grandchildren or, and we do lots of fun things and they have lots and lots of fun. I'm sure, we've had support groups, those are one of the things with the family caregiver support program, we do support groups for older adults and for grandchildren. Health, we have lots of health programs, yoga, strength training, Pilates, we also have Tai Chi. Aging in Place, this is a new program that we've had for three or four years. This is the, they install grab bars as well, they do light step repair, they've replaced floors for people, they have power outage lighting for the home, and they give a lot of fall prevention education. We also have an Aging and Disability Resource Connection and this is, the federal government several, several years ago decided they wanted to spend money in that category. So we, we got in on the ground floor, I believe there's 14 of them in the state of California. And this is the idea that you have some, they want to be able to give the people, the callers, options out there, it's called options counseling, and they want to be able to support the person to stay in their home as long as possible. And they want to, it's almost an enhanced information and assistance program. And next slide. And we also have an online resource directory that goes hand in glove with this. There were over, we served over 352. There were over, we served over 352 callers and we, they, 3,642 people got on the online resource directory just this year alone and they went to 86,000 pages. So you know, people are going through that to actually find services for the individuals that they're wanting to care for. Could be a lot of people that are out of town and a lot of people, children that want to help their parents. So this is online resource directory right there and there's that address right there in that middle of that card. Information and assistance, we are regularly, we, we serve over 5,000 calls a year and we're directing people. We're directing them to different programs that, that are available for them in their community. And also they can, we talk about the state programs and there might be national programs as well. Health insurance counseling and advocacy program, this is Hi-CAP. And if anyone is a Medicare recipient or a Medicare beneficiary and they want to receive help with their EOBs or they want to just get, make a good decision about regarding their supplemental plans and their Part D, the Part D is for the drug plan. That is the, we have three staff that do that and we have several counselors here in Amador County. And we also have served, we served 85 Amador residents last year during the Part D enrollment. You can review your plan from October 15th to December 7th and we saved those consumers over $25,000. The multi-purpose senior services program is to help clients live and stay safely independent in their homes. It's a Medi-Cal waiver program for individuals 65 and over with a zero share of cost. Clients must be willing to follow the parameters of the program and you can see Amador County has 28 residents that are participating in that program. This is our contracted provider programs for 2425, Amador County Senior Citizens, which I've spoken about. They do their home delivered meal program, their congregant dining and the transportation. They also do outlying congregant dining, dining in different areas. Like they just added one in Plymouth. They have a, once a week, they have a congregant dining there and it's at the fairgrounds and it's been very, very popular. I don't know if anybody's attended that, but everybody really loves it. You have, good, yeah.
It was nice.
Yeah. So they, they did, they have one in Pine Grove and they have the one in Jackson, Plymouth, I own, and then.
One in Pioneer.
Pioneer, thank you. I knew there was another one. Thank you, yes. And they're very, very well attended. And their home delivered meal program is very, very excellent. They use fresh hot meals and they deliver them daily. And it's really a wonderful program and they started the medical transportation program this year. And they're slowly building that program and that is a wonderful way for them to meet the needs of the community. Then Catholic Charities does the ombudsman and elder abuse prevention program. And here is the page that we've all been waiting for, at least Supervisor Epperson said, we need to look at this. For the, for 2324, the Amador County match funds, the amount was 79,185. All of these services, the contracted and the direct services, you can see the funding and how it funnels down and we spent, we used 608,592. So for every $1, the match, the county provided, residents received $7.70 in services. And this is not even including staff time or anything like that. This is direct services to the client. So that's a pretty good investment. It's pretty, pretty hefty there. We have this year up to your county match was 91,180 for 2425 and we, it's already up to 406,310. And that's about 450 in services. And that's just up to third quarter. So we have a whole nother quarter to add to that. So the return on your investment is huge. It's really an amazing investment and something like that is, is really fabulous. Our agency is familiar with aging and the issues and concerns around that. Aging is something we all experience from the day we are born. Our agency's goal is for individuals to age with dignity, having the freedom of choice to be empowered to positively impact their own aging process. And we want to be very much on the forefront of that and we work, we work diligently to be very involved even in here in Amador County. Any questions?
Questions for the supervisors?
Do you do weed eating for old people?
We do have a chore program that does weed eating.
Cause I know every fire protection district meeting, we have a commenter that's always asking about weed eating and I will pass your number to her.
Yes, we do. We actually have weed eating, weed eating services.
That's for good, that's good to know.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Supervisor Cornell? Supervisor Crew?
No, pretty, I agree. That's a pretty good return to our investment.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anything for the public?
This is my favorite part of any meeting is when I get to say nice things about people. Area 12 on aging, several years ago, my mother took a fall. I take care of my parents, by the way. They're 95 years old.
That's commendable.
Thank you. Pretty soon I'm going to be eligible for these programs. And several years ago, my mother had a fall. The people in the government community of Calaveras County knew about this because like, we're friends, keep in contact. And Area 12 on Aging called me and said, listen, we have some great programs that could help, help your parents out. And you know, one of them was like handrails and other services like that. I wasn't able to take advantage of that because I'm proactive and what is it called? The compulsive disorder. I take care of things before they need to, need to, need to happen. So we had handrails. We had everything set up for my parents. But Area 12 really got out there and, and were very proactive and wanting to, to help where they could. It didn't take me reaching out, they reached out. And I thought that that was very, very nice. Your return on your investment isn't pretty good. It's excellent. Never, remember that most of the, most of the people that go to the polls are, are older people in these, in these Motherlode counties. So taking care of them is not only a moral responsibility, it's a responsibility to yourself for staying in office too, because you know, they're the ones that are, are pulling that lever at the, at the polling place. For the younger members, one day you will be old too. And when that happens, hopefully we'll still have programs like this to, to help you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate you. You just looked at Logan, not me. So thank you.
I will say this, I do like old people, but politically speaking, a lot of them are conservative and not all of them want government programs. Think I started it.
Let me put it this way. I'm probably the most conservative person you'll find. Not socially.
No.
Economically. And I find that, and I'm out there a lot in the communities. I get out there. When you can tell a person, regardless of their political affiliation, I wish item one B was on the agenda today, speaking of political affiliations, but for some reason it wasn't. Regardless of political affiliations, I go out there and talk to people and tell them what's available, whether it's through the Air Pollution Control District, getting a, a new wood strove for free, whether it's through ATT, Amador Toowalomee, Amador Toowalomee Community Action Agency, telling them that, you know, they can get assistance with their, with their, with their heating bill, with their PG&E bill. Everybody accepts that. They don't stand up and say, I'm a Republican and I just don't believe in taking any money from the government, because they understand that they put money into this system. And every day I pay those taxes.
You must not know some people I know.
I know, I don't know some people you know, but that's a, you know, I think it's pretty fantastic that we all can have these, you know, opinions, but a lot of people aren't just, aren't well off and they need the help. You know, I've been up here since I was a kid. We've owned property, I should say, since, since I was a kid. And I can tell you, things are changing. And maybe not for the good, Mr. Onneto, in some respects.
Things always change.
Yeah, I'm afraid they do.
Whether it's political, geological, climate.
Okay, guys.
I was moving my library.
Let's get this meeting moving along.
I agree.
Okay, I don't see anybody on Zoom. This was a pleasure of the, my presentation only. So we will go on to.
Thank you, Dorian. Coming down, thank you.
One E. Thank you. Administration Agency Discussion of Possible Action Relative to Request for Allocation of Funds for 2025, 2026, Amador Council of Tourism. Again, no.
I know, I don't have enough.
You ladies are persistent.
I know.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to start? Hi, we're back. Tracy Burkner, Amador Council of Tourism co-founder and you have a packet in front of you that kind of details out everything that we've been up to for the last fiscal year. Last year, you generously funded us at 101.5 for, for tourism marketing to create awareness and visitation to Amador while benefiting the local economy. Amador County Council of Tourism has invested in branded marketing, travel and trade shows. And those travel and trade shows were mentioned a few times already today. The Seasonal Spectacular, which was a meeting planner and convention in Sacramento. That was our first, or our first time since COVID participating in that. And over 500 attendees of meeting planners from all over California. And we had some great response and some great attendance at our booth. And, and we, we gathered a lot of contact information and we're continuing doing follow-up with those contacts. Most of, most of the education that we did while we were there was letting people know where Amador County is.
That never runs. I'm amazed. I'm, I'm still like, I own, they always think I, they think I own it. I'm like, I don't own it. It's a city. Sorry, just, yeah, I get it.
Tracy, it could be worse. Talking to my old relatives, she told me when they were young girls, a big, a big thing to do is they'd drive down to Clements. And there's a little arrow that said, I think Jackson that way. And they'd turn the arrows from other directions. That's all there was.
It happens. So at those trade shows, we do a lot of education about where we are, but also to gather information about what people are looking for and how we can help them with their business. And so we are gathering information and directing people towards our community constantly. That was 500 people at the Seasonal Spectacular in Sacramento and people from all over California. At the Bay Area Travel Show, we had interactions. There was over 10,000 people there. And I think Nicole could probably speak to this better because she was there both days. And she didn't have time to think for most of the, of the first day. And, and it, it was, it was mobbed. Our booth was mobbed. People wanted to know what we were doing, what we were up to. And so it was a great outreach in creating awareness. In fact, Nicole met a gentleman who said, oh, I have a house in Volcano. And she said, that's in Amador County. And he said, oh, I didn't know that. So there was some, some great education that happened during that, but also some awareness. And at that travel show, we handed out prizes. There was a prize wheel. There were, there were bounce back cards that were handed out. And we've already started to receive those. And, and people are coming up to the area and redeeming those bounce back cards. So we are starting to see that happen right now. One of the things that we did learn at the Bay Area Travel Show is that a majority of the people told our, our team there that they would be only traveling in California this year. They would not be going out of the country or relatively out of the state. They were going to stick close to home. So there's plenty of people here in California and we just need to get them here.
Yeah, I saw your ad at the, at the airport a couple, three weeks ago.
Oh, great.
I come down, I'm like, hey, that's where we live. But we're well done. Yeah, it stuck out real well.
That's great. And, and there is, oh, she's getting that. There's, we have some visuals for you as well. So for those of you who haven't been able to do some traveling recently, you can see what, one of the things that we've had up at the baggage carousels in SMF. Our goal of visiting Amador, if you didn't know already, is to make a positive economic impact on the community. Today, we heard some things that we were just kind of trying to promote our own businesses and and while our businesses will benefit from things, it's all the businesses in Amador. Anybody who has attended our meetings knows that we're all about uplifting everyone in our community and promoting everyone in our community. And we want to make a positive impact on our economy here and to make it strong. And we know that that's possible. We've seen it. We're still in a recovery mode, but we know that we can, we can continue to rise the, the tide and bring all those boats up with us. And that's the reason this whole organization was founded by myself and another gal who had a bed and breakfast and we, you know, I had the St. George at the time. And the only time I sold rooms was on Saturday night, sometimes Friday, Saturday, maybe some Sundays here and there. But I, I went to our local business organizations and asked how, how can, how can I help bring people here? And, and they said, well, we do one thing every year and we go to the state fair and we do a county booth. And that was the extent of the marketing for Amador County. That, that was it. So, so we've changed things a little bit since then. And that's been since 2000. I think 2000 is when we started. So as you'll see on our tourism leadership, we do have an advisory board. And, and if anyone from the Board of Supervisors would like to be on our advisory board, we invite that. Richard Forrester was on our advisory board for many, many years. And so we encourage you to join us. Our meetings are on the second Thursday of every month at 9:00 AM at the Hotel Sutter. We run a very prompt meeting and, and invite time for people to share and provide information.
Fucking the chemicals are fucked up.
Sorry.
Our advertising efforts this, this past fiscal year have provided over 10 million impressions alone last month at the Sacramento Airport. The impressions through people. The impressions through people coming through the baggage claim was over 3 million.
I saw that, yeah, right there, yeah.
Yeah.
So in talking about the keeping tourism and helping our local businesses thrive, Tracy and our board have been working with the Amador Business and Tourism Alliance, which involves the Chamber of Commerce, the Wine Heritage, and also the Amador Council of Tourism. And so our goal is to move forward with items from the Amador CED Plan that calls out our organizations working together. And we've hosted two training programs to benefit local businesses. One of them was our Serve Safe Program, which is ABC now requires anyone that's serving alcohol to your customers needs to go through the Serve Safe Program. They need to have their own server ID number and to be compliant with that. And I believe it's a two-year recertification process. And so we brought out Jerry Jolly, who used to be, he kind of went up the ranks, very great guy. But he was the head of ABC, so he kind of knows all the ins and outs, but he also headed the task force when he first started. So he is now a trainer, so we were able to work together. His training is almost $3,000 and so we were able to subsidize that through the three of us. And it wasn't just to winery owners, it was to businesses. We had participants from all over Amador County and their servers that came to that training. It was great. And we've also, we had over 60 attendees in that class. So really trying to work together as much as possible. In that packet, I'm going to call out some statistics here, but the Dean Runyon Report saw Amador grow from, grow to 151.8 million dollars in 2023, which is a steady increase. In 2022, we were at 145.6 million dollars. The contribution in state and local taxes for 2023 was 13.6 million. Visit California also added a new measure for 2023 travel-related earnings to allow for measurement of employment generated by tourism and related services. And travel-related earnings for Amador in 2023 were 83 million. So that's going over, you know, restaurants, lodging, you know, anything that a tourist would have, shopping, gas, all of that. And that's also sourced and in your packet from the Dean Running Report. Sustainability, you've heard that a lot today. So sustainability, as we're growing and strengthening in our partnerships with hospitality, restaurants, retailers, nonprofits, and the cities of Amador County, leading to improved marketing research and capabilities is, is what's creating our stability. But we also need stability in knowing what our funding is and what we can count on to be able to project that and move forward. And so to maintain its platform and programs, Amador Council of Tourism is going to be working with the Amador Lodging Alliance to, as we have been, to pass the Tourism Marketing District within Amador, providing us our guaranteed funding. The funding from Amador County Incorporated Cities and Businesses Partnerships allow Amador Council of Tourism to make a small splash in the ocean of potential visitors. So, you know, keep in mind when we're talking about all of this, it's a really small, even though you hear these huge numbers, it's, it's a really, it's like a penny to the ocean, but this is, this is our penny and we want to make the most of it. And so it's really important for longstanding funding plus the anticipated increase that the ACTMD will give us. Amador Council of Tourism's growing partnerships with local businesses, nonprofits, and cities enhance our marketing reach and stabilize its operations as well. So efforts to establish a tourism marketing district with the Amador Lodging Alliance for dedicated funding alongside with ongoing TOT funding requests from the county, cities, and business partnerships. All of this anticipated funding is what increases ACT to deliver a more consistent and impactful tourism message.
So our funding sources, we leverage, as we've talked about, with, with the other cities, with some TOT monies, with the volunteer tourism assessment, and, and, and with the Gold Country Visitors Association as well as Visit California. So we are constantly looking for ways to multiply the impact of the spend that we have for particular programs in ways that we can make an impactful and measurable difference, but also allowing our smaller businesses that don't have a marketing budget or have a very small marketing budget to be able to participate in marketing efforts that they would not normally be able to participate in with the constraints of their personal limited budgets. An example of that, as you will see in our summary, is at the top of that, the Cap Radio sponsorship program. For a week's worth of advertising on Cap Radio, the exposure cost our, our local businesses that were partners in on this, we had six of them, $714 for over 75 15-second blasts. That typically would run about $3,500. But we were able to negotiate a program and, and create that affordability where Visit Amador paid for part of it and the business paid for part of it. So that partnership allows our, our, our local businesses to do advertising that was normally out of reach. During that Cap Radio sponsorship, we also promoted local events that were going on. We did this heavy, heavy advertising on Cap Radio during our quiet time. So from Thanksgiving, just before Thanksgiving, all the way through February. And we promoted different events that were going on in the area, coming to Jackson Delights, the Holiday Open Houses, Scott's Walk, celebrating Valentines in Amador, and Winter Adventures in Amador, in addition to the individual businesses that, that promoted their businesses as well. You can see there's an extensive list. I think there's three pages of, of marketing things, actually four, of marketing that we've done.
Yes, and one of those was, I just handed out to you our map that we did. So it's the Amador County, there's more in Amador is our tagline that we like to use. And so this was created because a lot of people want to have a one-stop shop of, you know, something readily available without, you know, too much literature. So what we did was we have, you know, Sutter Creek, Ione, Amador City, Plymouth, Pioneer, Pine Grove, Volcano, and Jackson. And then highlight features pulled out for each of those. Seasonal events called out for each of those. And then just other important facts. And then on the back, just kind of a, a map showing you all the different, you know, and just how big Amador is. And then it goes all the way from basically, you know, Ione up to Kirkwood. So again, with more important dates called out and kind of some drive times to let people know. And then a QR code that brings them to a landing page for us to track how many people are going through and looking at the map. This is our first run. We'll be, at our last board meeting, we kind of went through and had people that wanted to make some changes or additions to the map for their particular city of interest. And then we're also updating the map on the back to make it a little bit more, because we realize, you know, when we go out and we're in the Bay Area and people have no idea where Amador County is, you know, I need to be able to show them like, here's California, here's this, here's that. So, because a lot of them know 50, they know 80, but they're like, 80, 49, yeah.
How do you, how do you tell them? Because I always say I'm like east of Stockton. It never sounds right. It's like.
We say, well, we say, you know, like 45 minutes east of Sacramento. A lot of them know Sacramento. A lot of them have relatives in Roseville, I found out. There's like about 500 relatives in Roseville that I talked to. And so, and a lot of them are, have heard of Jackson, which is thankful to the rancheria. A lot of them, you know, have heard of Jackson. But that just also goes to show, because the rancheria has those strategic billboards that spread past, that that's what's being seen. And so, so it's very interesting, but that's usually kind of our waypoints. And for example, when we were in San Jose at the Bay Area Travel Show, it took me two hours and 15 minutes to get there. And so people like that less than three-hour mark for a getaway, so.
Yeah. And just to kind of bounce off of that, one of the reasons we did the, the destination guide and map, we had a full magazine that we would sell advertising in the past and produce these big things with lots of stories in them. And when we do our advertising with Visit California or Gold Country Visitors Association, one of the bounce backs that we have is that people can request more information about your region. And so we get quite a number of people requesting information. The cost to mail those magazines was getting more and more expensive. And so we decided to try and produce something, one, that costs less to produce and managing our budget and being more efficient, but also less to mail as well. So we wanted to still get the information out to people, but at the same time be mindful of using our, our funding properly.
A lot of people are kind of going electronic too, which I kind of hate it, but it is what it is.
You know what they are, but they aren't.
Yes, so we do have digital. So we actually do have a digital guide. It's a little bit different than this. It's more of a magazine style that's on the website. But to what Tracy was saying, the people that are requesting want something tangible. So they are requesting a mailed tangible product. And, you know, and since we're working board, I'm the one that goes and mails all these little guys out. And, you know, I was mailing to Japan, to France, Montana, like other, it was kind of interesting because you think of Montana having, you know, they're wanting to come here. People want to have a different experience. So it's, it's really unique. And like Tracy was saying, we get an average of about 20 requests per week. So that's a lot of requests.
So, so we did initially print 5,000 of these. We have gone through them after the Bay Area Travel Show. There's just a, a few.
You guys are holding on to one of the last few maps, so that's the first edition.
Redesign, we're working as a team to redesign the, the map a little bit and refine some of the information that is in there. And we hope to do additional print of about 20, 25,000 for this coming year. I won't go through everything that we're doing and the individual points, but to say that, again, we have partnered with, with the Wine Heritage District. And we are doing some, some different advertising. We're trying to, trying different routes. And so we're doing some streaming TV and audio ads. We have some YouTube non-skipable streaming ads. All of these can be targeted to specific geographic locations and demographics. And so we are targeting specific geographic areas to bring people here. Most of it is with an hour to two-hour drive. We have familiarization tours. We had meeting planners before the Seasonal Spectacular in December, a group of meeting planners who have a subgroup that are wine lovers and wine educators. And so we brought them out to introduce them to the Amador Wine Country and show them around. During that time, the wineries sponsor the visits, the wine. They stayed locally. Those, those, those stays and their dinner were sponsored by local businesses. And so, and already from that particular group, there's already been someone who was from Oregon in that group who brought her family back and spent five days here.
She was there for five days, yeah.
And, and spent a lot of money.
Her daughter chose, and her daughter, so she was from Oregon, but her daughter lived in a different state. But she celebrated her 30th birthday in Amador County. So her mom loved it so much and was telling her about it. She said, let's do the family get together there. So that was really a direct.
A direct impact from that. And then on Friday, we have six wine bloggers and writers that are going to be earlier this week in El Dorado County. And then they will be spending Friday here in Amador. And this is through a partnership with Gold Country Visitors Association. Again, they'll be doing some visiting to a few wineries. We'll be hosting them for dinner at Taste. They're staying at the Hotel Sutter. The Hotel Sutter is providing their shuttle to provide transportation throughout their, their visit here and then getting them over to the airport on Saturday after some more tours. So, so those are all done, the familiarization tours through partnerships, through these different associations that we belong to, which the funding does help pay for. But also, also in partnerships with our different Gold Country Visitors Association partners. And then, and then to get them here, it takes the local businesses to do a little bit of give as well. So it's, it's all done with partnership and everybody working together.
No, a question for you. Was ACT involved with Flynn Creek Circus?
Yes. Yes.
I remember there's something struck me kind of weird about that operation.
It's, it's a traveling circus.
I remember reading something there. It seemed kind of out there.
They're, they're a Cirque du Soleil style. So they're not the typical type of circus. They're more of a theatrical circus, like a Cirque du Soleil performance. And if you've ever seen Cirque du Soleil and you've seen the Flynn Creek, then you know, you understand what the Flynn Creek is. It's more theatrical. It's not about animals and clowns coming out of a little car.
I understand that.
But it's, it's definitely, it's popular. They, they run their, their shows from San Diego to Portland every season. And they create a whole new show every year. And they bring, they bring performers from all over the world that are the best jugglers or fire throwers or eaters. It's pretty, pretty amazing. And if you, if you, did you attend the circus?
No, I didn't actually.
You missed out.
Something on it, there's a lot of things I missed out on in life. I'm still doing okay.
It may be back this summer.
Things you're better off you miss out on in life.
You may be back this summer. Don't miss it. It's, it's pretty entertaining. It's a lot of fun, yeah.
I'll try to make it so I can.
Good, good. We've, we've engaged with social media influencers and, and really have compounded on that. And, and that seems to be a very cost-effective way to bring awareness to, to where, to where we are and the attractions that we have. There's been thousands and thousands of views from the, from the people that we've brought in. And that's all listed here. We talked about the baggage carousel and how it's typically 2.8 million impressions a month at the, at the airport. Again, Mark saw 3.2 million impressions.
There's also the Burger Root listed, which was another handout that I gave you guys. That was something that we did in collaboration that was mentioned earlier with all the different burger eateries throughout Amador County. And we saw a lot of enthusiasm from that and were able to pass that out to different trade shows and participants. So it, I think we're going to be doing something like that annually, possibly mixing it up, doing different things, but getting interest and kind of featuring different restaurants and also combining that with Restaurant Week.
Yeah, I was up at the Buena Vista Casino there when they had their Burger Day. That was actually pretty, I was actually kind of surprised. It was like 10 bucks to get to taste, I don't know, how many burgers you want. And it was a pretty, it was really well attended. That's, I saw our vice chairman up there.
I have to laugh as I, I had to count it up. I said, I've been to 17 of the 31 places. Maybe that's the reason I'm so fat. You gotta have goals, I guess.
You can be our official Burger Root spokesperson.
Yeah, there you go.
There's potential there.
I, I will say, as the event that he was talking about at Harris', I got to be a burger taster. Oh, my Lord. Oh, my lord. There were so many different burgers there. I was done for burgers for a while after that.
Oh, my gosh, that's great. Um, one of the things that we've done this year, uh, is, uh, what we've called the Daffodil Trail. Um, and this is an homage to the, um, to the Ryan family and, and Daffodil Hill and all that they gave to our community over the years, that they opened their private property to the public and created so many memories for, for people. Um, I made a connection with, uh, a woman who provides grants for, uh, Keep America Beautiful. And they're working on some other grants in the area. And I happened to mention to her this, um, daffodil root. And she is currently seeking grants to, um, to buy daffodils and also to provide, um, volunteer hands to plant daffodils, um, throughout Amador. So, um, we'll update you on that progress.
There was a, when my wife was going to Stanl State, there was a, a history class that she took and it was in two parts for a weekend. And we started out in Sonora and worked our way from Sonora all the way up along forty-nine with a whole bunch of detours. And you had, you know, excuse me, it was back in the cassette days. But, um, you would sit there and stop your car at a certain point and hit play. And the professor would have you look around. It was, it was, as you're talking about your daffodil drive, that's why I'm immediately thinking, my mind immediately went back to that. Because that was, it was, it really introduced me also to Amador County at that time. You know, that was nineteen eighty something or other. Um, but that was, it was a really interesting class that I got to take with my wife.
Yeah, yeah. And there, there's, I think that because the bloom would be from February to May, um, it has the potential of bringing people up and thoughtful tourism, not having them go all to one place at one time. But they can come and they can, they can keep coming back and, and moving to different parts of the county to see the bloom, so.
Talk about ink next year?
Yes.
So, goals for next year. So, um, with the anticipated additional, um, participation and input from our looking, local lodging partners, we're hoping to increase the effectiveness of bringing awareness to Amador. And with this, um, you know, because obviously we've been doing a lot of things. We're seeing what works, what doesn't work, ROI, working with the Wine Heritage, um, working with neighboring, um, entities such as, um, Gold Country. Um, but we want to geo-target streaming ads and podcasts on Pandora and Sirius XM. Uh, we had a lot of talks, um, with Joanne Weir, um, doing a Wine Country Cooking episode within Amador County. Um, and this was something that would be a multi-year budget investment and would also, um, need to include co-op opportunities from other partners. But this is something that would be, um, great exposure, uh, and have a long-term showing. So it's almost like an evergreen. Um, and then it also goes on to public broadcast. And Joanne alone has a huge following, so it really speaks to the more foodie. Um, and with Sacramento hosting the Slow Event, um, you know, it kind of ties everything together. Much harkening back to earlier when we talked about bringing people here when they're doing other surrounding events, thoughtfully, this would definitely be something that coincided with that. Um, Sac Town Magazine, being able to do, um, full page bi-monthly, um, advertising and also their event blast, um, to over thirty-eight thousand. Uh, California Road Trips was a Visit California publication. Uh, we would co-op this with, um, the Gold Country Visitors Association. This is something that we have participated in a couple of years ago, um, but it is expensive. So we've had to be very prudent on picking and choosing where we're putting our funding and, and, um, choosing different marketing. So this is something though, that we've seen a great ROI on and we would like to add that into our rotation. Um, as Tracy mentioned, um, redesigning and reprinting out our Amador Destination Map and Guide. Um, attending the Bay Area Travel Show for twenty twenty-six. Um, this is something that, uh, we've had a lot of, um, our fellow board members attend and it's really a great exposure for Amador County and allows us to kind of see also what travelers are interested on and interested in. So it changes, um, and, uh, so that's a good pulse point. Um, focusing again on our email and newsletters. We've been starting that for this year and that would be something that we would like to continue. Um, press releases, continuing with our press and fam tours. Also participating once more in the California Seasonal Spectacular Trade Show that is held in December. And then, um, Visit California Magazine, which is great exposure. If you travel, it's in most every hotel. Um, and this would be something that we co-op with the Visitors Association. But again, Visit California is a much more spendy ad. Um, so it's something that we need to have our, um, funding in line for. As we move along, this kind of, um, recaps, uh, the Dean Runyon Report that we had mentioned earlier. So this, um, new report that's going to be, um, on your attachment be travel spending by industry segment. So accommodations, um, was twenty-seven point four. Arts, entertainment, recreation, twenty-five point one. Food service, um, forty-one point eight. Food stores, fourteen point six. These are all in the millions. Uh, local transportation gas, nineteen point five. Retail sales, sixteen point six. So, and this is, um, Amador County specific. So you can see how important tourism is to, um, the local economy. So I know that there was some talk earlier about how, you know, this is just funding lodging businesses and that is not the case. If you look at this report, yeah, accommodations is, is pretty much in line with arts, entertainment and recreation, food. It's, it's, you need to encore- encompass everything and lodging is the, is the vehicle with the T O T in the assessment. But it's really helping all local businesses. And this is a great, um, report to kind of show everything that it does help and impact. Uh, the next page is travel spending in Amador. Um, and this goes over, I won't call this out, but you can, we had this in our earlier slide, um, just from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-three. And then, um, the next few pages are going to be the direct impact summaries. So this really breaks down everything, um, shows you the percent of changes between twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And, um, you know, really calls out, you know, when it's saying hotel motel, short-term, private home, campground. Um, and also again, calling out those visitor spendings by, um, whether it's retail sales, food, et cetera. Um, and then it also really breaks down and goes over from twenty twenty, twenty fourteen, excuse me, to twenty twenty-three, um, direct travel generated earnings and also, um, direct travel generated employment, which is, um, you know, you gotta have jobs. And so definitely, I mean, in two thousand fourteen, um, accommodations and food service was, uh, nine hundred and forty jobs. In twenty twenty-three, it was, um, one thousand three hundred and thirty jobs. So, um, you know, it's, it's an important thing. Um, state and local tax recipients, uh.
And, and the Dean Runyon Report is updated in May of every year.
Yeah.
So typically when we give this report, we're about three weeks away from having the twenty twenty-four data. If you're interested, we'd be happy to forward you that twenty twenty-four data when it becomes available.
Sure, I'd like to see it, yeah.
Okay, great.
What is interesting too is how the arts, entertainment and recreation, how's the last, you know, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the change? That's, that's significant.
It is. And, and so, um, in, in the previous, um, uh, presentation, talked about how, um, people are looking for, for arts, for entertainment. They want to support artists. Um, we have an incredible, um, arts community here from music to graphic, uh, to phys- to, uh, visual arts. Um, and, and so, uh, it is a, it is a very important part of our community.
What I'm saying though is it dropped thirty-six, forty percent.
Well, and it, and that's, it is an important part of our community.
Oh, it is.
We need to support it.
Well, what I'm seeing there is, I think for the last two and a half, three years, you know, and even COVID things, things went nuts. Um, but even so, I think money's been getting tighter and tighter and tighter and it's.
Correct. I think what you're seeing in this is a direct impact of, um, people need to eat. People usually have to travel and stay at a combination. But, um, you know, arts, entertainment, recreation, not something that's not a must. It's not a need, it's a want. And so I think a lot of people felt the impact of twenty twenty-three, um, and twenty twenty-four of tightening their purse strings and that's where you're seeing that dip. And so what we've noticed, um, coming into twenty twenty-five is, um, an already an increase in, um, spending for, you know, for my business directly, like doing entertainment or wine or something that's not necessarily a need. Um, you know, it's, it's back to twenty twenty-two numbers for us starting. So twenty twenty-four was really hard. And I think twenty twenty-three was leading into that, so. But that is a good observation. Uh, and then as we kind of conclude, I know you're gonna miss the drone of my voice, but, um, uh, just kind of going over our profit loss, um, is the last two pages, uh, just of, you know, how important the funding that you provide us is. And much as Susan spoke to Sutter Creek and when we, you know, we talked to all the different cities, um, they also have, you know, when I present to the city of Jackson, you know, there's, I think, like six other people presenting that are requesting funds for different items. And so they're, and they also have things in their general fund that they need to support. So it is harder to get a bigger ask, um, you know, and, uh, but we do everything we can for that. So, and I know that City of Plymouth is going to be changing a little bit since the hotel will, um, possibly not be included. I know that we've left it out because it's not going to be included in the T O Ts any longer, um, because it's acquisition for the tribal land, so.
I actually met, I don't want to speak for her, but I'd met with, um, the chairman there, Susan Dusky. And she's, and they're now considering actually rehabbing the hotel. If you heard any of that or not, I'm not sure if that's the public or not. But, um, I did talk with her and because of some other things that had changed, they were considering that. Because they, they bought that hotel, you know, for the ingress, egress.
Right.
I think that's pot out there. But yeah, just talking to her, it sounds like they have some renewed interest in rehabbing it, so. Just FYI.
We will talk to her. Thank you. So we do, you know, every, every penny that we receive in funding, we put out to, um, promote Amador. Uh, we use the funding, uh, judiciously. Um, it is not used, I think, you know, we have an administrative person that manages the website, um, the phone calls and the emails. Uh, we pay that person a thousand dollars a month, um, for probably, um, ten thousand dollars worth of work that they do a month. They're amazing. Um, and then, uh, we have an independent person who, uh, keeps the books and enters things and questions us on things and makes sure that we have all of our information here correct and that we're, we're accounting for the, the funding properly. Um, and then, uh, you met Nicole multiple times over the last few months. And Nicole, uh, does our social media marketing and she doesn't charge us very much. Um, and she does more than social media marketing. She attends all the Gold Country Visitors Association, um, uh, meetings. Um, she does the travel shows. Um, she's out taking photographs constantly, um, working with all the local businesses. And, um, we, you know, she should, she should, uh, cover her ears if she's still behind me. And, um, we should probably be paying her four times as much as we are. Um, but, but.
He also brought, the Gold Country Visitors Association does a meeting, um, at a different location each time. And she brought them to I own. And so they did an event with, um, the Rail Explorers. And this is representatives from Calaveras, Swallownee, um, Elk Grove.
Placer.
Placer, Folsom. Um, and they were blown away and, um, Church on Main hosted us for lunch. It was amazing. And, um, you know, ACT, uh, paid that local business for their lunch and their time. And, um, so we're investing back into our own community with that. And everyone that came had never been to Rail Explorers and most of them had never been to Amador County. And so they were just blown away. So, fun things.
Yes, yeah. So, uh, we are a good ROI.
It looked like you had a little overdraft fee maybe. Those things happen in life sometimes.
Yeah, our overdraft fee came from, we're switching to our, we had banking with Umpqua and then they moved out of Amador County. And, uh, we were in the process of changing to Wells Fargo and Jackson. And a, a check came through that while we were doing the process.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the presentation.
You bet.
Anything from the public?
Thank you.
Okay, anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Oh, why is it there's public?
She's up for a raise.
Chuck, did you get the email I sent you? No? It's fine. Um, I just wanted to point out a couple of things that the ladies lightly touched on, but, um, for example, yesterday I created a post in regards to the forty-niner wagon train that's coming through. And so I did a reel for that, um, and it's received over nine thousand views, which ninety-five percent of those views were non-followers of Visit Amador's social media page. Um, I know because we've had representatives come to some of our Visit Amador meetings from wagon train, they have some concern, but that, that due to funding and support, that they might not be able to continue this program. Um, you know, I'd like to just mention that, you know, a hundred and ninety-six people out of those nine thousand liked the post and shared it forty-four times. Um, if we had money to boost these kinds of things through social media, which we're not currently doing, everything that we get is organic. Um, then I also think that that could be a really important piece of it. As well as, uh, as Kathleen had mentioned, I did host the Gold Country Visitors Association meeting here recently. We also had Yosemite here, they were the other county. Uh, so we got eight counties into Amador for the day. And a lot of them had never been on rail bikes that are similar to what Rail Explorers offers. In short, I'll just tell you, they're very different than a lot of rail bikes throughout, um, the United States. And so I also shared just a simple post for that and it received over seventeen hundred views with, uh, more than half of those being non-followers. So again, those are people that are not following our social media every day.
You said rail bikes?
Yes.
Hmm.
Don't ever call it a car. I learned the hard way.
You mean like a speeder?
What was that?
Those things, hmm, okay.
Uh, it was, it was also in the slide that, that was right. Where'd you go?
Nicole went, your email went to spam.
Yeah, like a speeder. They call them.
Yeah, my name blocked, don't you? Already.
Yeah, they're actually. A speeder then.
Uh, they're, they're pedal assisted, so they, you don't use pedal.
I could let Amanda come up and tell you all the things about it.
Not a lot of effort.
Yeah, so it's power assist. So that was the beauty of it is, yeah, we were able to bring people on there that wouldn't otherwise come because it does go to power. So, um, as Amanda would tell you, there were a group that celebrated a ninetieth birthday that came out and it was exciting and amazing because, you know, it got them out there. They brought the bike to the Bay Area Travel Show. We were hands down the busiest booth at the entire show. Um, you know, I had to beg some of the girls to watch my booth so I could get a bathroom break. But, um, as I mentioned when I spoke earlier, the biggest things that people were asking about were, you know, hiking, um, experiences. That's the other thing that we're seeing a lot of is, uh, the next generation wants to experience things. These are the ads that I've created, um, in the last fiscal year. So it just gives you an example, but we do add a Q, an individual QR code to each ad so we can track and see how those are responding. Um, as Kathleen mentioned, there's partnerships available with the Visit California magazines that go out. A single page in the Visit California Magazine that they have is twenty-seven thousand dollars. These are three. So a lot of times what I'll do, I know it's, I think it was in March, um, we did a quarter page for each of the businesses that I created to try to keep the consistent look. Um, but then that's absorbed by four different businesses, allowing us to be able to advertise in magazines like this. Yes, we'd love to do the Visit California ads at some point. Uh, Gold Country Visitors Association also has additional opportunities for us to partner to bring, um, not Hugh Housner, obviously, anymore, but other groups out to do additional videos and exposure for different demographics. But the ask on that is really high. And so I just kind of sit back at the meetings and say, well, hopefully one day. Um, but yeah, these examples are just a few of those things. And as I said, I just wanted to tell you some of the social media speak because that is where you're getting a lot of traction these days. And so if we had the opportunity to boost some of those, I think it would be great. So thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
No. Thank you.
Okay, so we've gone through public, gone through Zoom, back to the board.
Well, I'll, I'll say this, I think you girls do a very good job. Um, and I know Tracy and Mark ran a pretty exceptional business, so. My, my problem is, uh, we've got a pretty major hole in our budget. Um, we cut the chamber some. Um, we cut the chamber some. Um, we told IT, which I don't know if we can carry it off or try to, told them, don't fill a position. Um, sheriff's giving up some money. A little bit sugary in DA and probation is not giving up a dollar. That'll probably change, um, hopefully, but we'll, we'll see. Um, so I think, I think ACT will probably lose some funding, it's a matter of how much. I think you do good work, I'm not saying your work's bad. It's just, it's what, it's a problem we got. It's like we're looking at a couple of million dollars. Um, there's only so many places to cut. And we have, we have roads, um, probably some of the money may be coming out of, maybe out of the roads, which I, I don't like at all. And the next issue coming up is probably, um, oh, federal trapper contract we have. And we'll see where that goes, but it may, it may go, it may go away. Um, and I represent ag, but I've talked to a lot of ag people too, and they're not, they're saying, hey, roads or trapper, they're kind of saying roads. And so I look at council tourism. I think we need to share a little bit of the pain. So I'm not saying it like that, but that's, that's what I'm seeing.
Supervisor Epperson?
It's a, it's tough right now. I know, um, with the, uh, with the new, uh, last discussion, our pre-cup discussion, I think it's, you know, there'd be some money coming in there hopefully. I think that'll make up some of that gap as we move forward. So yeah, as far as how much, I guess that's the bigger discussion, I guess.
Supervisor Cornell?
I think we all have to share it. I just think everybody has to take a little bit of a hit. I have to go home and tell my wife we're cutting funding for baby kittens. So I think we just all have to share some of the.
Well, you better not go home.
I'm telling you, I don't want to disappoint these ladies, but she's tougher than all of them.
So still back to the board, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I think it's important. I mean, I don't know, you need to cut a little bit. I don't want to cut too much. I mean, it is, it is obviously generating revenue. That's the bigger thing. We don't want to, you know, hamstring you. I'm, you know, I'm not sure everybody else is that. I think, I think, uh, you know, 90,000 is probably, that's where I'm at. That may not be enough for everybody else, but that's kind of where I'm thinking. It's just a pinch, but it is something.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Do we have a second on 90,000?
I think you need to cut a little bit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I was muted, I couldn't speak for that, but.
Sorry about that.
I applaud the ladies for their efforts and their working towards self-reliance. So they have a steady funding source and they are not depending on the whims of the Board of Supervisors or the city councils or sales tax drops or the way the wind's blowing or anything. But the harsh reality is that we have, we told the chamber to become self-reliant and they slowly cut them this year and their membership's going up, so they're getting where they are more self-reliant. Um, way back when, they raised the TOT from 6% to 10. And for some reason, the board at that time gave all the money to the Council of Tourism and none was shared with the chamber or the cities or. So now that I think that the only, it's to right a wrong, in my view, that they're equal, that they would get 60,000, we had 180 to spend, 60 went to the chamber, 60 to ACT and 60 to roads. Would be my motion.
We already had a motion on the floor for 90, so.
But no second.
But no second, so that one died. So your motion is for 60? And do I hear a second? Okay, that one has died.
Well, you know, I'll say, I'll say, I'm like, I'll make an alternative motion then. I think part of my issue is, I think the cities need to pony up a little bit, a little bit better. That I'd like that, but, um, I'll make a motion, um, that we reduce the friend funding from 101,000, it's unchanged, to, um, we make 71,000.
Do we have a second? Okay, that one has died. We've tried 60, we've tried 80, we've tried.
We cut 20 from the chamber. So in the essence of fairness, we cut 20 from ACT and then it's the same cut, correct? They went from 80 to 60 and this would go from 101 to 81. Exact same cut.
Depending how you look at that, that could hold.
So I'd move for that.
That's your move?
That's my motion.
81.5, is that what you said, or?
81,000.
81 and change.
Or 81.5 or 81,000?
81.5.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Call for the vote.
Thank you, Chairman Crewe.
Pat, you there?
He muted himself. Chairman Crewe?
Uh, can we have discussion on that?
Yes, sir.
80 to 60 was 25,000, 25%. I would like us to consider that 101 to 25%, the same percentage. And we gotta get them funding the same someday. You had a chance and you didn't want to do it. Why not reduce them both 25%?
What I will say is this, Pat, I think maybe in time you might get there, but personally, I don't want to shock them too hard.
That surprises me, Brian.
On contrary, some people may say I'm a fair, I think, I think I'm a fair guy.
Okay, so.
At least I try to be.
Calling, back to, uh, is there any more discussion? Okay. Supervisor, Chairman Crewe, yea or nay?
No. No.
No, okay.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Okay, that was a 4-1. It passed at 81,500. Unfortunately, we had to do this, is, it's, we're going to be going through some hard times. This is something that, it's kind of scary for the county. Um, we've got a financial couple of cliffs that we're trying to avoid and this is one of the things we're, we're shooting at to try to not, um, lay off anybody of our own staff to boot. You know, so this has been really hard, especially since most of our staff is sheriffs. So this is a, this is a hard thing. So I thank you for the presentation, all the wonderful things you guys are doing for Annmar County. Um, it's, unfortunately to the, uh, the amount of money, we really appreciate it. You guys have done a great job for the county and Rail Explorers, I love your little pedal vehicles. How's that?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I've gone out twice.
So what I've been seeing, I think maybe I'll get the, my dollar from the DA's budget after all.
Okay.
Can't help it.
We're on to, does anybody need to take a break?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Bunch of camels running around here. One F, discussion impossible action relative to trapping services offered by the ag department and consider of a wildlife services agreement with agricultural departments. And there we go.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Board of Supervisors, thank you for having me here and I welcome the opportunity to answer questions about this program. First of all, I need to introduce myself formally. There's a couple of people here that I haven't been in front of before. My name is Eric Mayberry. I am your agricultural commissioner. I've been doing this job for about eight years. I just, you know, I, I get, um, the, the, the budgeting situation and, um, you know, this is at the pleasure of the board. Um, what you guys direct me to do is what I'm gonna do in my budget. I get that, it's your decision, but I do have a, um, you know, a point of view and I'd like to express that. So, um, first of all, it's, this year is a financial plan only. Every five years, we, we get into a contract with Wildlife Services at USDA. And that's kind of the contract and then every fi, and then every year, if there are costs, you know, with gas, employees, whatever, goes up and down a little bit. The, the cost went up less than a hundred dollars, um, this year versus last fiscal year. So it's a fairly nominal change. Um, if we were gonna have a discussion on, are we gonna bring this inside the county and have a county employee this, do this work or just not do this work at all? Um, I would suggest that the best time to do that would be, um, when the contract runs out in 2028. That being said, you know, I will defend the program and talk about it as much as you want to. I did invite, um, the regional supervisor for, um, Wildlife Services, his name is Ryan McCreary, if you'd like to hear from him. He's the one that provided this handout that, uh, I have up at the, at the back. So if you guys want to hear directly from him and he has some details about what they do and some statistics, I, I would like to bring him up if, if that's okay.
You know, I think what'd be real helpful to me would be, is if I have something in print, how many different types of calls they come to in the county? What types, um, outcome? Oh, because I've had some people, I've talked to some people in the ag community and one person was talking about, hey, they had a lion issue and they're told to go out and jump up and down, hoop and holler, play radios, bang pots and pans.
Yeah.
That's not what we're looking for.
Yeah, I respect that. Um, about two years ago, a decision was made in California at the state level that restricted what you can do with mountain lions specifically. So, um, because mountain lions were kind of put in a different category, um, you could not get a lethal, um, what, what do they call them? A depredation permit, thank you.
And I don't blame, I don't blame the trapper for that. It's just, it's, it's what.
Right, so whether the trapper is, is, is executing the depredation or it's the local landowner, you have to get the depredation permit from, um, Fish and Wildlife, right? And so they are not issuing those depredation permits essentially on the first call. You have a, let's say you have a sheep or a, you know, a cow that's killed, um, they say, well, you have to go in there, you have to bring the goats in at night or, you know, you have to put up something on your fence and then if there's a second kill.
Goats in so the lion can't get to them or something. I'm not giving you, not, not a you, Eric, but.
Yeah, and so, and so if there's a second kill, then they will issue the lethal, um, permit, you know, the lethal depredation permit. In my experience, I've not seen a single one of those where we got the lethal, um, depredation permit in the last two years.
I know one locally where they had 22 sheep is actually one of my kids' teachers texted me. I went over and showed him what to do and he got a permit. I mean, I think what's happening now is you're just probably having underreporting because it's happening. I mean, as soon as they banned bobcat tags, I mean, I was getting calls already and I'm like, well, just, you know, that's what you gotta do, but you have to defend your stuff. You just can't let it be wiped out. I'm just, I'm just saying, they're just not calling it in, I think is what's probably happening.
I'm, I'm sure that that's the case.
I wouldn't doubt that a bit. I don't, I don't think the number of lions is less as being killed. I think you're just not talking about it. I'm, I'm a hundred percent guarantee you that. Not, it's not here, it's statewide. I mean, just, just knowing people, knowing, you know, livestock, how it works, it's just the reality of it. I mean, I defend your property. It's legal, it's not illegal, only it's breaking laws, just.
We know something else is coming at us. I'm hearing that the wolves are starting to head our direction.
They're close.
You know, we had one that passed through Amador County last year, whatever, came down from Oregon and it just, it was here for a few minutes on its way down, um, south and then it made its way back north again, but that was a single male. Um, Lassen County has a little bit different issue, which, you know, let's, let's hope, let's hope we don't have that.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just want to, yeah.
Is there any other questions about the program? I mean, you want to get into the finances a little bit?
No, I looked at the numbers. My, my question would be, would it be possible, maybe we could do like, um, share a trapper with another county?
Absolutely, and I've, I brought that up. Uh, and I, I spoke to both Calaveras, who we shared a trapper with some years ago, right? And it's been about eight years since we've done that. We shared a trapper with Calaveras County. Um, they have no interest in sharing their trapper. They have one and they said that they, you know, they're, they're not sharing. Um, Eldorado County has two. One is a county employee and one is a Wildlife Services trapper. So they have the same deal we do, plus on top of that, they have a second person that is a county employee. And I said, oh, well, that sounds cool. Let's, you know, maybe we can do this on our own dime, it'll be cheaper. And she said, forget about that idea. It's 130 to 150,000 dollars a year. It's expensive. Um, these people, um, especially the, the federal trapper can do things that the county employee can't do. Um, for, for instance, um, the, the fed guy, he can use silenced weapons, you know, the local employee, we're not gonna give them a silencer and a gun.
He's in my neighbor's house a while back.
They also can handle the sodium phenobarbital or something like that, but you know, yeah, but they can use drugs to kill these things quietly and without, you know, if you have a rabid skunk or whatever, you don't want to put your hand in that cage, right? So they stick it through the cage and they put them to sleep, um, painlessly and quickly and, and so forth. The local guy, um, unless maybe we run him through the animal control, is not, you know, my employees can't handle drugs like that, right? It just can't happen, so. I would be, I would be interested in any of those alternatives if we could get it, if we could get it done. But the two neighboring counties that would probably be most willing to share, um, already turned me down. I've called them recently.
So did Eldorado turn you down too then or?
Eldorado, yeah. Eldorado County turned me down and, um, Calaveras turned me down. Those was the two I called.
Are you dealing with largely nuisance animals or is it?
Well, so if you flip to the second page on the, on the handout here, I think I made them one page, so you kind of have to flip it over. Um, it looks like coyotes by number are the largest species removed, but usually I think when they go take a coyote, um, they take them all. You know, they find the den and they get them and the babies and they probably count them all.
Are these nuisance, are they diseased or?
Well, coyotes will take down a, you know, if you've got a bunch of coyotes and you, you know, your calves are birthing or whatever, that, you know, they'll take down the calves.
For sure, for sure.
Um, but black bears, I mean, I used to have honey on my property. I had five beehives and I stopped keeping them because of the bees. I, I mean, because of the bears. It just made it impossible to keep honey in my neighbors without doing a hot wire and fencing all around it and it just.
They only last so long and they either get, they figure a way around it. I mean, they're not, they're not done, they figured.
Exactly. So, you know, for me, I have five beehives. I was doing it mostly because my wife planted a bunch of fruit trees and she, she didn't like the yield that I was getting, um, which, you know, comments more on my ability to be a farmer than, than, than really anything, but, uh, she thought that that would help if we had better pollination. And so we, we got the beehives, but, you know, if, if you're a commercial beekeeper, which we have a couple in this county.
Number of them, yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, do this for a living, it's more than an irritation because once the bears find your location, they don't stop. They, they come back again and again. So for them, it's, you know, it's a serious financial situation. They usually have to find a new location to put.
Yeah, that's one of the places I frequent. They, they have a, a guy from Lewis and Idaho keeps them there and he, they just kept bringing them down the hill to try to figure where the bears were at. But now we have bears in I own fairly often. I mean, I, there's, you know, I hear about it. I got friends that got videotape of them, uh, in tearing up their, uh, their water tanks as they get in there and they're bathing and it's kind of cool off this summer, tearing off the float valves, so they're dumping thousands of gallons of water for they figured out.
Yeah, we keep a bear trap in our yard, in our county yard. That's, you know, exclusively for the use in our county. Um, sometimes they'll move it around, borrow it for other places, but, but we keep one Sometimes they'll move it around, borrow it for other places, but but we keep one and it is used quite quite a bit.
What's the success rate on that? I'm just kind of curious.
You know, again, Ryan, do you mind talking a little bit more about those specifics?
The success rate of what was the question?
A trap and a bear, I mean, I just, I've had them out, one of the places I hunt at, they had a bear trap out there and they they got out there three days late, probably just didn't.
Well, I think the biggest factor is first, you have to go through California Department Fish and Wildlife and get a depredation permit.
Right.
So unfortunately, that's probably the hardest step right there or to get past that.
Yeah.
When you're using a covert trap, usually whether you're talking about bear or lion or whatever, the sooner you can get out there.
Oh, yeah, sure. Timing is essential within a day or two, otherwise you're done.
Right, right. After that, once the, you know, if, once they've torn apart the beehive or the orchard or something, they've moved on.
Yeah.
So it's really very successful if you're out there within one or two days.
When the carcass is fresh, especially.
Yeah, if there's a carcass, you know, particularly with a lion, we'll get calls that someone found a carcass and it's, they call us, you know, five days later.
Yeah.
And it may be a mountain lion kill. It's like.
And they usually grab the liver and come back, whatever else and they, you know, bears don't show up, but yeah.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to point out is the agreement we have with the county is a cost share agreement. So the county only pays 75% of the full cost and then the federal pays the rest. And that's the way our our program has worked.
Historically, the state of California used to kick in 33%. And so it was like more of a, you know, we would, we would pay 40%. They would pay like 30% and then the feds would kick in 25 or 30%. And that state welched a couple of years ago and we've been carrying the whole load.
Okay, so you think is there that chance that money coming back from the state, do you think or?
State of California?
I know, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, everybody's familiar with the federal government. The state's been taking our money for years and I'm just observational.
I I'm not optimistic.
Okay, just out of curiosity, sure.
Yeah, the state, no.
Well, I know they're going bankrupt.
Should. Well, they got a lot of money, it's a matter of where they're putting it.
Well, that's fair. Well, that's fair too, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
If y'all have any questions, though, about operations or anything else, though.
Yeah, sure. Can you give us, I'm I'm just curious, I'm I'm just kind of give you that an overview real quick, maybe just two minutes, whatever. You're like, get me out of here.
Are most your calls, like you got like like the coyotes, is that a lot of varied places, operations?
It's a lot of, that's usually a lot of livestock depredation. It usually occurs, the work we do will usually occur during lambing or calving season. We do work on a lot of those properties may overlap where we do feral hog work. And so it's kind of a mixed bag.
I think the pigs, I mean, that's Carbondale Road.
Yeah, they're out there.
That's where that's where they had, they took a lot of pigs out of that area. The coyotes, a lot of that was in the Ione area. You know, you go out there, Dwayne Martin's place out there, there's a, there's a lot of coyotes out there. A flat area.
And interesting off your list here that foxes aren't, we've got raccoons on there, but foxes are not in there.
We do some fox work when I put this together. I kind of narrowed it down to the primary ones.
Right.
This list could have been, you know, 20 or 25 individual species, but I had to narrow it down to the primary ones. But yeah, you know, foxes.
I got an 18 pound cat that loves to chase the foxes. It's kind of hilarious to watch on on the cameras.
Well, I, on my property, I actually keep a trap. It has nothing to do with him. I don't call him, but I have my own traps on my property and I let the foxes go. Most of my neighbors are cool with the foxes, as long as you're not feeding your cats outside and they're interacting with your your pets. Usually the foxes tend not to be, unless you got chickens, that's a different deal. If you got chickens, a fox is an issue.
Yeah, I'm sorry, bobcats aren't on here, rattlesnakes, none of that or?
Bobcats are on there.
We do some bobcat work, but again, you have to have a depredation permit.
Right, you do now, yeah.
For bobcats, that started a few years ago.
They stopped the permits, yes.
And so it it's another complication.
Obviously, bobcats on their page, I was looking at the backside there.
You know, Eric, I'd like I'd like to see you reach out to maybe other counties, see if there's somebody we could partner with. I'd like to cut the costs some if we could.
Yeah, I respect that. Placer County, I haven't reached out with, but again, that would.
Maybe Sacramento, San Juan, one that's close, if you could, if they have one, I think.
I I will, I will send you an email with the results for for each one of those contacts, but some of the big counties don't like to play with us as well, but I I'll try.
Yeah, because I was talking to some of the people and a lot of the ranchers kind of almost do their own thing, but you got, you got like 600 coyotes that will probably six, 630. Yeah, but it it's a lot of them just do it themselves.
Well, and again, that's why some of these numbers are not as accurate as they could be because there's a lot of just, just take care of your own problems without calling the ag department, which, you know, that's fair. But not everybody has the resources, not everybody is willing to discharge a firearm or, you know, have it, own a trap or maybe they're living in an area that they're next to neighbors or whatever, where they don't want the sheriff called every time they have a problem. And so that's where really these people excel in that urban rural interface in some places like Ione, Sutter Creek or whatever, where you do have residential people, you know, that are very close by that would definitely hear gunshots and might call people. They have access to traps, silenced weapons, you know, poison and stuff like that that they can use that, you know, the normal homeowner isn't going to be using those tools every day, so they're not going to be good enough to use them correctly. So they're experts.
Did you remove rattlesnakes too then or is that even on there?
Rattlesnakes are not included.
I know fire department takes care of them, I take care of them.
I was going to say, most of the fire departments have been taking care of them.
I get call, I get as many calls as fire department sometimes.
How often you get, do you get calls for rabid animals?
All the time.
Is it, is it, is it truly rabies or is it distemper or what is it? I mean, I don't.
You know, when we get the call, it's usually, we we've got a raccoon or a coyote or a.
Skunk's quite a bit.
Skunk or a fox or whatever, and they're out in my driveway and they're dancing the marimba and that's not normal activity for this animal during the middle of the day. Something's going on with that. They will trap the animal. I do know that they do diseases like with the swine they send in for diseases. I don't know whether he bothers with like the skunks and stuff. I don't know that he bothers to do that. I know animal control, if the skunk bit a person, they'll cut the head off, they'll take the salivary glands down and and they will submit them for testing. But if it didn't bite a person, I mean, it's a dead skunk, who cares?
So you get a fair number of possibly rabid animals in?
Oh, all the time, all the time.
Yeah, we'll get those calls and like, you know, sometimes it's distemper, sometimes it's rabies. And if if the skunk has bit a person or maybe a pet, then it can be tested for rabies. That's one thing. We have a very robust disease program, a national disease program. We have a national feral swine program. We have a national detection dog program.
So the swine, that that's for the African swine flu?
It's for everything, yeah. Africans, we do testing for African swine flu, pseudo rabies. There's probably 10 or 12 different diseases and bugs that feral swine can carry. And AFIS supports us, gives us quite a bit of support for feral pig testing. There's the AFIS program, they categorize states on a scale of one to five, one being the lowest and five being the highest as far as the priority of providing resources and funding. And California is the number five state. And so it's top 40 as far as on the national spotlight for feral swine work.
Okay, the pigs around Ione, anything there, anything positive or?
There's probably some, I know we did some in Southern California or Southern Sacramento. It seemed like in Southern, they went back and forth.
Yeah.
Were able to pattern them. I'm not sure what the results, there's, I wouldn't be surprised if there's pseudo rabies. That's not uncommon. But that was, I think it was last year that we caught some, they were going back and forth.
You know, they cross where they're getting the Van Black once in a while, they typically are a little farther east or?
Yeah, it's right there by there's that shooting range.
Yeah, I know where it is.
And there's some ranches on the other side of that road. That's usually they mingle around there.
Yeah, my friend's place got torn up along, got turned over pretty good, but it's right out that way. Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
So any comments from the public? Any comments from Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, it's back to the board.
So the work, I'm going to be clear, so we're contracted for a certain amount or just contracted in general? Is that kind of where we're at?
Well, so we're, every five years, we do a contract where we're contracted for these services.
Right.
And then every year, if that number changes, then they come back to get the financial plan approved. And that's what we're doing, that's what I'm asking you guys to do today, is approve that financial plan for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, so with the with the amount, would that affect the contract at all then? Is that, I'm trying to get a read on that part of it.
That is all, that is all part of the contract. So the contract is that they will give us a number.
Okay.
And then we agree to the number.
Oh, okay, all right. So we can't reduce the number, we disagree to the numbers there.
I assume that would involve.
Yeah.
Changing the scope.
Right, okay. That's what I'm asking, yes, that's what I'm driving in. Okay, all right.
So when is the five contract, five year contract? You said 28?
So it, yeah, so in 2028 is when I would come with the full contract language. We have to do CEQA, we got to do all that kind of stuff, once every five years. And that would be in 2028.
So we either cancel this or refund this.
If we were to cancel it, could we revisit it at any point?
Well, so between now and July, we can do whatever we want, but after July, once you're out of the program, then you have to pay for 100%. They don't, I mean, it would, I don't know what it would cost us, but it would probably cost us about 130, 150 to get back into it. Let's say we wanted to, you know, we want it out this year, but in 2031, we want it back in. There's been some counties that have done that and then they make them pay for the whole whole thing. They don't, they don't really want you to get in and out. And so there, and there are some counties that have done that and then they end up standing up their own program, which I I think is great. I wouldn't mind having a county employee do this. The problem is, is every time I've looked at it for Sirius, it looked more expensive than what we're doing. What we're doing is not, I mean, it's not a great, great deal. We're probably paying 75%, 80% of what it would cost us to do it, but still, you know, 75% is still better than 100%. So I I doubt that if I told you, hey, I'd like to stand up my own program, can I have 150 next year? I don't, I don't think that would go real well, so I'm asking. Yeah, I'm asking for what I need.
Still need the services.
Well, that's the other, I was going to question too. I mean, part of the expense is probably the prioritization. I mean, I, or some call, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, you know, the the cost structure itself. I mean, if you deploy the trap, I assume there's more expenses there. If you're just simply going out and removing a skunk, I mean, is that, is that how it's priced or how the cost is out? Is that how I'm?
Well, so there's a lot of stuff that's legality wise for the, for these programs. So like, for instance, if you have your own trap and you trap a skunk, we're not going to come and take care of your skunk.
Right, correct.
That's a you problem. So they have like humane traps, you know, officially licensed by the US government. These are acceptable traps to use. They provide the trap, so you call, he'll give you the trap. He tells you, put some cantaloupe or peanut butter sandwich in that on Tuesday. I pick up on Wednesday and Thursdays. And then if it's not trapped by Friday, close the trap because I'm off on Saturday, I'm going to Disneyland.
Yeah.
You know, I'll call you again Monday, tell you to set the trap again. And so, you know, they have a very organized way to do this. But, you know, but there are days when, you know, they have a mountain lion going or a bear going where he's sleeping out at someone's ranch in his truck for four days straight.
Right.
So it it's difficult to say, well, he's working eight hours a day and we're going to cut him to six hours a day or whatever. It's pretty hard to do that. When I didn't work for this county, I previously worked for Calaveras County and we had very similar discussions. And at the time, they they made a fairly large jump in the cost. It was like 25% jump up. And so at that time, and again, this is probably early 2000, you know, 2020. Yeah, something like that, maybe 2008, I forget which. But anyway, there was a big jump that came up and so the county negotiated to, you know, lessen the contract by 20%. The problem is, is that means that the guy that was doing the trapping in Calaveras County for that time, for 20% of the time, he went and he worked a a project like at an airport, some federal airport military base or so, I don't know what it was. But he was working on federal land so he could get paid somewhere else. And when did they pull him? Because it's not our choice. He pulled him during the time of the year we got like the majority of our calls. And it was a nightmare because, you know, you have a program and then you cancel a program. We still get calls for mosquito control. People want to come and get a little mosquito fish or wherever, because we had a program for like five minutes, 10, 10 years ago, they're still calling for it. And so, you know, when we said, I'm sorry, we don't have a guy for two months, you know, you're, you got to deal with that skunk living in your attic or that, you know, that coyote has already killed six of your chickens and you know he's coming back tomorrow and you tell them, they just got to wait for two months. They're, they're upset. They, they, they usually call Brian immediately.
What do you mean, I get calls all the time?
Yeah, you need to, you need to talk to Eric because he's a, he's not doing what he needs to do. They get, they get pretty upset.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, I, yeah, it's, it's, they show up when they show up. That's the whole thing, I guess.
I guess a question I'd have, so if you, if you get rabid animals, who's going to go out and take care of them, other than the homeowner or neighbors?
Well, you know, it would have to be like animal control and, and, you know, it's lovely for me to volunteer animal control to do this when he's not in the room, but, you know, Evan would maybe have to speak to that on. But I think that their mandate is that they do domestic animals only and and if there's a rabid skunk, that's kind of not their problem. And so they they kick it to Sheriff's Department. And so in the end, for counties that have just kind of walked away from this program, it's, it's Sheriff's Department is, is where it ends up. I mean, that's really, and then somebody goes out there and they're like, oh, there's a skunk and it's scaring me and my family. And then, you know, Sheriff's Department, honestly, you know, they're, they're good at what they do, but, you know, trying to kill a, a skunk with a 40 caliber or a nine millimeter or whatever in somebody's driveway is, I mean, that ends up on YouTube. It's not cool.
Not preferable.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So back to the board, do we want to continue this program?
I'd like to see if we could maybe partner in another county. I think a couple have already told you no, but.
So do you want to hold this off until we find more information?
I'm with that, I'm, I'm, I'm with that. I mean, I think we need to, I don't think we can cancel the program. I think it's.
No, we can't, yeah. So we're just gonna?
Two weeks or a month or what, what are, what are the thoughts?
How long do you think it'll take you to get to hold this?
Well, I, I mean, I'm, obviously, I'm going to make calls today, but as far as them getting back to me, because I'm going to want specifics on.
If you come up with something, we'll get right back to it.
All right, well, I'll put it back on the agenda as soon as I have something that's worth talking about.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Eric, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Eric, real quick.
Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Chairman crew.
A question if, if a lot of the pigs and coyotes are down by Carbon Dale in the flat area, maybe San Joaquin would be a better choice?
Oh, for sharing the work? Yeah, I would agree with that. The, the problem is San Joaquin County is not known for their ability to share with us, cause we, we do a lot of things where we share equipment, um, for other programs within our, our work. And we always, we're always sharing with Eldorado, Calaveras, Placer County. We can't, we can't get the big counties to play with us for whatever reason.
Okay. Well, this is a thought.
I'm going to reach out and I'm going to have, I'm going to have an official request for each one of the counties that are nearby. And, uh, I will ask them to give me an answer one way or the other. And if it is, you know, how would that work out? Cause obviously the closer it is, if they're adjacent, it's more realistic than, you know, sh- sharing with Merced or Madera or something like that wouldn't work, but.
You know, it could be the big counties too, maybe. I, I know some person is trying to get hold some big counties on a particular item. Nobody had any authority or knew anything. It was just, it was a big morass. Like a small county, you can get to that person pretty quick and get a decision.
Yeah.
That could be the problem.
All right. Well, I'll, I'll get right on it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to one, one G, discussion of possible action relative to proposal from Supervisor Epperson to create a county fish and wildlife commission to investigate and make recommendations as to wildlife related issues in Amener County.
Very good. Yeah. It's just a kind of, kind of a interesting left, uh, Amener County is the only county that doesn't have a fish and wildlife commission. Though Calaveras certainly does, uh, Eldorado does. Um, I made a bunch of phone calls and been making contacts over the last few months. And some of the, I mean, some of the, the projects would be like kids fishing days. There's actually going to be one in, uh, Calaveras County next, uh, a couple, a couple of weeks from now. Um, I reached out to some of the other board members, talked to them, kind of figure out what the usefulness of it. The budget number would be relatively inconsequential. There's just some money from, uh, from, uh, tickets from fishing and hunting violations that would be poured into it. It's like 1,500 bucks, I think in the budget. Uh, the upsides are, is that it would promote, you know, fishing and wildlife recreation in our county, which is actually a fairly large thing. If you don't know, I've been, I teach hunter education, have been for almost 20 years and graduated somewhere around a thousand students or something like that, I'm guessing. A, a large chunk of those in the county. Some of the other projects together, I talked to Craig here the other day. Uh, there'd be some partnerships, some things with as far as predator management, strangely enough, uh, raptor boxes like owl and some programs, there's some things, some opportunities there. And some educational component too, that would, would encourage, uh, you know, wildlife education. A lot, like a lot of the skunks and different things, some of these things can be managed, some of them cannot. I mean, you can bang on pots and pans sometimes, but that's, that's just all you're doing is denting your pots and pans. There's also some opportunities for, is, uh, you know, fishing line collection. A lot of times they put up boxes or some grants, some other things for that. Uh, and then, yeah, there's just, it just basically would be discussing, uh, wildlife and fishing related issues. And again, predator management component, we just talked about that there. But it, uh, I'd called Marion Guaramendi and she was, she was almost giddy. She's cracked me up. And she's like, I've been hoping to get one in Amener County for 15 years, she said. And, uh, but I talked to her a little bit and, uh, she pointed me in the right direction. Uh, I think Calaveras has a fairly progressive, uh, already has their bylaws and constitution. We could mirror that pretty easily. I reached out to council. I think that's, it's not that, wouldn't be that, wouldn't be that heavy of a lift to get some of these things done. Um, but it would also be able to stock, uh, some local fishing areas and have some kids fishing days. And, uh, that's kind of the, the very, I'm trying to summarize it very quickly. So I'm just asking that if the board would see fit, that they would kind of green light me to kind of do a little more work on this and hopefully get this implemented. Fairly short turnaround. And, uh, that's kind of my request. I think it's overdue, but that's where I'm at.
Okay. Anybody from the public want to talk this?
I guess it's a good afternoon at this point. Good afternoon, uh, Supervisors, uh, Craig Baraco, uh, Foothill Conservancy. Uh, just wanted to put in a brief word of, uh, support for this effort. As Supervisor Epperson mentioned, uh, we are the only county that does not have this mechanism, uh, to engage in these kinds of issues. I think, um, they come up, um, quite a bit more frequently than, um, I was expecting when I took the, the conservancy job. Uh, my background is primarily, uh, land use and zoning and I've been up here in front of you guys for a lot of those, uh, for those issues quite frequently. But our watershed work and our, um, uh, work dealing with, um, the McCallum River in particular and sort of lakes and streams in general, uh, fishing and other, uh, such activities have come up quite frequently. Um, the, um, we're coming up in the next couple of years, um, on the, uh, FERC relicensing of the entire, uh, McCallum River Hydro Complex. So Party Dam, um, Comanche Dam, the, uh, East Bay Mud and PGE is, um, are all going to be, um, up for their relicensing by the, by the feds. This opens up a lot of issues, including fishing, recreation, hunting, uh, because, uh, East Bay Mud, for example, uh, operates, uh, hunting preserve in the Comanche area. It just would allow, uh, this, this advisory committee would, uh, allow the county to engage in these issues. It'd provide a form for it. It also, uh, would, as, uh, Mr. Epperson said, um, allow us, the county to engage in programs and receive funding and other, uh, types of, uh, support for various, uh, issues related to hunting, fishing, preservation of species, um, and so on. So just, uh, wanted to get that in and, uh, we, uh, we as an organization be, uh, eager to, uh, work with, um, the, the commission once it's formed. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, it's back to the board. This is just direction to staff. So is everybody in agreement to start this or?
Yeah, that could be fine.
Okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Supervisor crew, what was that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So this is a direction to staff?
Good, thank you. All right, guys, thank you for your support.
Okay, we go on to one H, approval of use of park and recreation development impact fees for proposal improvements to Fiddletown and Pioneer Parks. It says that here, but the one thing is that there's something in the resolution that I just want to make sure it's across the board if we, that we approve this, is it also allows, um, other funding for some of the cities, but they have to get an MOU together to get their portion of the funding.
Yeah, I spoke about that with, uh, with Michael Rock, executive from Accra and, um, and with Greg. And what we need for the cities is a contract.
Okay.
And so we forwarded a, a draft, I forwarded a draft contract to, to Michael and he's forwarding that to the cities. And so the cities will be bringing forward the, the parks, uh, the, the projects one at a time for.
But because of the resolution, the only thing that needs to be finished on the board, it wouldn't come back before the board, the contracts would then be approved?
No, those contracts would come back before the board as, you know, as they're drafted.
Even though there's a resolution authorizing it?
Well, this, uh, this resolution, I think what you're referring to is just the, the last recital on March 12th, that part?
Get it up, sorry.
Where, where Accra, uh, recommended approval of the projects? Yeah, so, so that's the first step, um, before the transfer of the pre 2020 funds is that Accra gives the recommendation, then the board approves it. And so, um, so that part would be done. They wouldn't need to go before Accra again. They would just bring the contract before the board and then the board would, would transfer the funds.
Okay, I'm missing this. Where did I?
I was getting a little ahead of ourselves here.
Sorry, I'll let you just continue on with your.
Yeah, provide a little context for everybody else. So, um, GSA Director Glenn Spitzer, uh, good afternoon, board. The background I wanted to give has to do with the development impact fee for park and rec. So in 2020, the cities in the county, they approved, uh, a new development impact fee for, for park and rec improvements. And, uh, the cities controlled the, the funds and Accra controls the regional funds. And, and the regional fund right now has $553,000. And, uh, there's a, there was an existing development impact fee for park and rec that the county controls. So we, we call that the pre 2020 fund. And that one still has $869,242 in it. And the mitigation fee act is the law that allows this, the counties and the cities to adopt this fee. And, um, and the thing about the, the fee is that, uh, the fee act is that it generally requires that you expend this money when you've got enough of it for a particular priority project. And, um, and well, you know, bluntly, we haven't really done that. We, we got some catching up to do. Right now we've got between the 869,000 that the county controls and Accra's 553,000. We have 1.4 million that needs to go out to, to parks. And, uh, and we have especially some urgency with the pre 2020 funds. We need to get those spent as quickly as possible. We've got a lot of great projects. Now this is what we're talking about. So the, uh, Accra board met on March 12th. And, um, and prior to that, the TAC met, Accra TAC met, and the city representatives and the county representatives got together and went over all the shovel ready or near shovel ready parks and, um, came up with a really, really good list of parks that, uh, would, would allow the county to expend that money. And, um, and those projects will be coming before the board. And this is the first of those projects. And, um, and so what I'm bringing before the board right now are the Fiddletown Park improvements and the Pioneer Park improvements. And the Pioneer Park improvement is a reconstruction of, of the existing tennis court and the addition of another court adjacent to that. Uh, and that would have four pickleball courts that would be dedicated just to pickleball. And then there'd be some ADA improvements at that Pioneer Park. And the estimated cost for the Pioneer improvements, uh, is $486,944. And the county has a state grant of $400,000 that's going to be used for the Pioneer Park. And the other project is the Fiddletown project. And, uh, and that is reconstruction of the tennis court and the basketball court. And the tennis court would also have some new striping for two pickleball courts that would be used on that tennis court interchangeably. And that estimated cost is 243,744. And the county already approved the, a contract for architectural services for this, these two projects. And that was for 32,000. And, um, the total cost with, with all of that and then a, a 5% contingency is approximately 800,000. And like I said, we already have 400,000 grant. So what we're asking here is the transfer from the development impact fee, the pre 2020 of 400,000 so that we can use it to fund these parks. And that's the resolution. And if you have any questions, I'm here for that. And I don't know if, uh, did, did we answer all of, did I answer those questions?
Well, it's just, you know, it, it says here, the board supervisors hereby authorize the audit. Utter's offices transferred 400,000 from 19,000 to fund 1990 to use the county development funds. And that's, that's fine. The remaining balance of the sub accounts within fund 19,000 shall be as follows. South County 34, Jackson 79. So it just makes, as you're reading the resolution, it kind of like we're putting that money there, but it still needs to come back. That's the only thing I'm just a little bit fuzzy on.
So those accounts that it's referencing, those are the sub accounts from that development impact fee fund. And, um, and you'll see the total is now 469, where it was, where it is existing is 869.
Right.
And it completely draws down the North County and the Pioneer accounts. And then, uh, draws the other ones down a little bit proportionally.
So. No, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same conversation, you know, so it's how we're talking about it. That's fine.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine.
Anything from the public?
Thank you, Chairman Michael Rock, General Manager for Accra. I just have a couple of questions and, uh, a couple of things for clarity. The MOU that the cities would be asked to agree to will come back.
I said MOU, he says contract, so.
Contract. It's a two-page contract.
Right.
Would have to come back to the board of supervisors, but my question is, would that have to go to the city councils as well for their approval? I would think so.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I just want to make sure, cause I can help with that process.
No, if, if, so the county's authorized by our impact fee statute to use our county collective funds in a city's jurisdiction if the county residents would use that city facility. So to, in order to implement that, we would need a contract between the county and the city, which they would have to approve.
Each, each city council?
Each city for each project.
For, for, if they have a project.
This specific fund is, is still half, for those contracts, is it have to go through Accra before it comes to the board supervisors or can it go, come straight from the city to the board supervisors?
Well, so technically it's county funds. It does not have to go through Accra.
That's right.
Um, but the practice has always been for county projects to sort of get considered by Accra with their recommendation before it comes.
And, and that's what Accra did on March 12th. So you, the Accra board did approve those projects to be recommended to move forward to the board of supervisors under the old nexus money.
So, but what I'm trying to ask is, you know, now there's the next step to this is that contract. The Accra board did authorize it.
Mm-hmm.
But does that contract still need to run through Accra again?
No, I don't, I don't, contract would not go through Accra.
Okay.
If Accra's sort of blessed a project.
Yes.
Then it would just be between the city and the county.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to iron out.
And then maybe a finer point too. So if, I know there's, I believe there's, I worked on the parks master plan when I was on the Accra board, but I believe there's at least two parks that are already considered, uh, regional parks. Are those, I mean, I think kind of de facto, they're considered regional, so that money would be eligible anyway. Um, are we spending money on parks that are not considered regional parks and is that why the, why the contract is needed? I'm just trying to clarify that a little bit.
So the regional parks, I think is sort of something that's part of the new nexus.
Right. Well, so this is the old money.
This is the old money.
So I got you. So we're going to expand, okay, that's, that was my, okay, that's where I was.
So Accra would, would basically decides the regional park new money.
Yes.
This is, um, so the basketball court.
Right.
In Ione.
Yes.
By, um, Evelyn Bishop Hall, that was partly county money.
It was the old county fees, I recall, but yeah.
The county sent some of its.
They did, yeah.
Fees to Ione. We had a contract, it would be the same as that.
Okay. And so would this completely expend all of the old fees then?
Yes.
Pretty close?
We're working on it.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay. Yeah, this would, to clarify, this would expend 400 of the.
Not all of it.
And then the other projects would just come individually and.
Got it.
Yeah. So you will see all the other projects under the old nexus money within the next month or so as we get those con, contracts, MOU approved?
Yes.
And then you'll see all the other projects?
Okay, I'm clear now. Thank you. All right.
Supervisor crew, did you have any questions?
He muted himself again.
Uh, no, no, I don't, I'm unmuted now. You hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, no, I don't have any questions. All things per routine.
Okay. Well, back to the board then. Do we have a motion?
I'll move, it's approval.
Approval by Supervisor Epperson, second by Supervisor Cornell. Call for the vote.
Thank you, Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Supervisor Ronetto?
Aye.
Okay, it's a five zero that passes and the tennis carts aren't in there yet?
But we've got the plans and specs. We're going to move forward now.
When, when do we think we'll be able to go out to bid?
Uh, you know, we, we, we just want to, um, ensure that, that the specs that we have are what we've been planning on.
What everybody wants, yeah.
And, um, and then I'm hoping within a month.
Okay.
Just a question on that. I wonder if some of the stuff couldn't be reused, like some of the fencing and stuff? Cause I was looking at it and it really looked pretty good to me as far as the actual, like the cyclone wire and.
And, and I have the, the question out also about cutting the concrete and leaving the fence in place. So, so that's another possibility. So that's, that's the biggest detail.
That'd be big dollars.
Yeah. So, um, that's where we're at. I'll, I'll coordinate with you.
I know in Fiddletown, they replaced, they replaced those net metal posts not very long ago as far as like the, uh, what tightens them, like the anchors.
And if, if they're good, I mean, and we can cut, then that's probably what we'll do.
Yeah.
Okay, but I'll, I'll let you know.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One I, discussion of possible action relative to change to the county's liability insurance that would increase the deductible from 10,000 per incident to $100,000 per incident. Such a change would result in annual savings to the county of approximately 500,000 per year. A seven-year analysis of claims shows the county would have saved money over each year if the higher deductible were in place during those years.
So, Supervisor Onetto had brought this question up, uh, probably a couple of months ago, I think. And, uh, I asked her to take a look at it. And this is the information that she got back from our provider. Um, one of the most interesting things in it is just to really see how much our premiums have gone up since 1718. We are looking at, honest to goodness, 10 times, what it's gone from 138 in 1718 to 1.3 million in 2324. So, it is, uh, liability insurance is crazy. So, this, making this move would, would save us about 500,000 dollars. The, um, if, if we simply said, we can, we can demonstrate that we've got that 261 that they want to make sure that we're, we've got set aside. We've got that set aside in our, uh, our reserves that will adequately, uh, um, demonstrate that so we wouldn't have to actually create a separate fund. Uh, so we, the, the whole 500 grand would be savings.
What was the driving factor for our insurance going up? Do we have some claims, different claims on the county, like maybe some automobile accidents? Some SO claims or?
I think it's more a function of what's happening. Remember, we had that presentation about those.
Global, global picture?
I forget what they call them. Basically incredible jury verdicts that were so out of proportion that, um, it, it really sort of changed the environment. So, that, that fear of those.
Zillion-dollar cases.
Zillion, zillion-dollar cases is probably what's driving it. Because, you know, our, our, we've had some cases, but they've not been high-dollar value at all.
Sarah Duarte, Risk Management, just to give you guys perspective. Los Angeles County, I don't know if any of you have seen the recent agreement they had come to on a $4 billion settlement. So, it's astronomical and.
How much?
Four billion with a B. So, it's, that, although it affects directly Los Angeles County, it actually is going to, because Los Angeles County probably gets insurance from a reinsurer and it affects everybody, um, across the state and, and, and globally, really honestly, so.
My, uh, my little water agency up on the hill with 500 customers, uh, went from $13,000 insurance to 17, you know?
I don't know, I don't understand, honestly.
For steel water tanks, you know?
And I mean, we, this won't be the end of it. We probably will continue to see it. They thought it was going to level out, but it, there's talk that it's not leveling out. So, um, you know, with the recent LA wildfires, our property program within Prism alone took a $400 million loss with that. So, that is the pool we participate in. So, we're, we ultimately potentially may get affected. Our property program, however, is so insignificant compared to this, the general liability.
Yeah, looking at it, you see they're griping at the insurers. And I'm like, it's, I mean, between the judges, courts, and then just, I mean, you see the utilities. I mean, I mean, this is where, I mean, it's, we're all paying. I mean, it's not punishing anybody but all of us, but.
Well, and you kind of, you missed last year a presentation that Chuck was referencing. Prism, our risk pool came out and did, which was really enlightening on how ultimately those nuclear verdicts, as they call them, affects the original taxpayer. Because it, while the money's going to the taxpayer that might be in the suit, they're the ones that are actually paying for the suit, you know?
We're all in the pool, and that's the problem, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, this is a direction to staff. Anybody in the public want to talk on this? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, back to the board supervisors.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Supervisor Crew, in discussion, did you have anything to say?
No, I like saving money.
Okay, that was a motion by Supervisor Cornell, second by Supervisor Epperson, call for the vote.
Thank you, Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Okay, that passes 5-0. Thank you, Sarah.